Perfect. Welcome everyone to the Town of Greater Napanee Regular Session of Council for the 23rd day of May. Twenty twenty three. I just like to remind everybody before we get started that this evening's meeting is being recorded and live stream. To the Town of Greater Napanee YouTube channel. Having said that, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the rise and report from closed sessions evening at five thirty. I'll look for a motion to rise and report from closed session. This evening moved by Deputy Mayor Calver seconded by Counselor Norrie. All in favor of that motion? If there's no comments, questions or concerns opposed motions carried. I'd like to report that in closed session this evening council approved the closed session minutes from May ninth. Received for information a confidential staff report regarding a matter subject to slide solicitor client privilege and gave direction to staff. And received for information a confidential staff report regarding potential litigation and gave direction to staff. Next up is the adoption of the agenda. We'll look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda for this evening's meeting moved by Counselor Martin. Seconded by Counselor Hicks. There's no further comments, questions or concerns. All in favor of the motion? Opposed motions carried. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none. We'd like to start this evening with the public meeting under the Planning Act. Look for a motion for the resolution to convene a public meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver seconded by Counselor Panal. But there's no further comments, questions or concerns. All in favor of that motion? Opposed motions carried and I believe Michael's up and just before Michael gets started. Is there anybody here? Speaking for or against the the public meeting with respect to a number of concessions and part lots initiate the town initiated zoning and official plan amendment. Seeing none. Go ahead, Michael.
Thank you worship. So this evening, this this official plan amendment and zoning by law amendment public meeting is. For the towns expansion to the water pollution control plant. The site is designated industrial in the official plan and it's split zoned industrial and. Higher density residential in the zoning by law. Over time, the town purchased several properties to the west and to the north surrounding the site to. Facilitate this this eventual expansion. So over over the course of time, those those properties were purchased by the town, but the zoning has not been cleaned up. And the official plan designation has not yet been cleaned up. So going through this process and permitting the the amendments to the land use designation in the official plan. And the amendment to the zoning by law will facilitate the construction of the expansion of the facility. I will note that i- in the agenda package, there is a site plan. So this is still under review with staff. We're looking at it from an environmental perspective, from a noise mitigation perspective. It's still ever evolving, but. From a from a general state, it's more or less going to stay the same as what you see on this on in the agenda package before you this evening. These entire site will be subject to an environmental compliance approval issued by the Ministry of the Environment for a number of processes. Mr. Dayfield will be speaking to one of those processes this evening. Also will be impacts from a noise mitigation perspective. So it's it's an industrial facility. Ministry guidelines require that the municipality consider noise mitigation measures and potential impact on surrounding sensitive land uses. So that assessment is still underway. Environmental impact studies have been undertaken and updates have been undertaken. Most recently in twenty twenty one, that is looking at identifying the delineation between the wetland boundary and the lands. Permissible for development. So working with that and the site planning and the the noise mitigation measures that will eventually need to be. Implemented on either on the buildings or on buffering aspects around the site such as berms and plantings. Those will be fine tuned over the course of the upcoming several weeks. So the purpose of this this meeting this evening is to solicit any feedback from council this evening and hear any comments or questions or concerns of the public. Such that staff will be able to take that back and eventually make a sound recommendation to council on. The amendments to the zoning and the official plan designation.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Is there any questions or comments for Michael? We'll start with and then I think I think Peter is going to speak to this as well as he. Yeah. Okay. Is there any questions or comments for for Michael first? Go ahead, Brian. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Brian. Just get you to. Yeah.
So the houses right close by there say water and Hesford. How are they going to be impacted with this? This exchange here this they're they're still going to be classified as residential their tax. Their taxes aren't going to increase or anything because we do a zoning change.
Through through your worship. That that is correct. Their their taxes will not be will be will not be impacted by this. This is just looking at. Amending the the permissions for the use of our own land of the town's own lands. It's not. Looking to make any amendments to surrounding private properties.
Thank you. Thanks Deputy Mayor. Is there any other questions for Michael before we go to Peter? No seeing none. Okay. Go ahead. You're up, Peter. Thanks.
Through worship. There's a staff report later on the agenda, which we'll get into details about that the plant itself. With respect to Michael's report is if if there's any particular questions in regards to the the site or anything that I can I can take those questions.
Yep. Thanks, Peter. Is does anybody have any questions to Peter now or will they wait till a report later on the agenda? No saying none. Thanks, folks. Is that it? Then, Michael, I think it is, right? So.
Yeah. Yes, to worship unless there are any members of the public in attendance that would like to make any comments regarding the proposal or ask any specific questions. We'd be welcome to hear those now.
Great. Thanks. Is there anybody in the the body of the council chambers that wish to ask either Michael or Peter any questions with respect to this public meeting?
Three worship. That that's correct. So the Planning Act requires municipalities to circulate notice to surrounding landowners. So you would have been in that catchment area. So yeah, you're not being directly impacted, but you you did get notice for that reason.
Yep. Great. Thanks. Thanks, Dave. And thanks, Michael. Is there any other questions from the body of the council chambers? Nope. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Michael. Look for a resolution to adjourn the public meeting moved by Deputy Mayor Calver seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns. All in favor of that motion? Opposed motions carried. Next up is deputations and I believe we have a registered deputation this evening. Mr. Ian Monroe with respect to the Richmond landfill. Ian, come on up.
Think this is on. Yes.
Welcome, sir. And go ahead. Yeah, I just asked if you could speak into the microphone. You're doing a very good job so far. It just for there's not so much for the folks here, but more for the folks at home. So. Great. Thank you.
Thank you worship and the members of council for taking our deputation this evening. I could take the rest of your life to give you the history of this landfill. I know I have a ten minute limit and I'm happy to live within that. But please understand that what I'm giving you tonight is the Coles Notes version. There are plenty of resources out there for you to learn more if you have an interest and I'll talk more about that a little bit later. Down button. Got it. So just to set the the scene, the landfill was started in nineteen fifty. And it eventually became the township Richmond Township landfill and it was expanded dramatically in nineteen eighty. Or nineteen eighties and was immediately upon expansion. Sold to a a large waste management company. Waste Management Corporation bought that property. In the late nineteen nineties and again, once again, immediately sought to. To expand it. That particular proposal was rejected in two thousand and six because the site was not safe. It took the ME CP six more years after that to porter the landfill to be closed. It had it was was full in the year two thousand. And it took until. Two thousand and six or two thousand and twelve to get it closed. So concerned citizens MBQ Napanee Greenlights. Objected to the plans to monitor and care for that landfill. In twenty twelve and took both waste management and the ME CP to the environmental review tribunal. So up again, as I said, in twenty twelve. And it proved the landfill was in fact contaminating the groundwater. In the area and that was despite years and years of denials on the part of waste management and ME CP. So the decision from the tribunal. Required waste management to delineate, i.e. define, find it and define. The limits of the leachate contamination in the groundwater. So this presentation is in effect an update on where that process is at. So last year, the ME CP declared the delineation to be reasonably done. That was a very strange selection of words and to say the least, our committee. Finds it, but this disagrees with that. Very little testing is being done on the Martin property, which is directly east of the landfill property. And that's the basis for our concerns about the delineation. So I have a few maps to try to give you a bit of a sense for the lay of the land out there. You can see on this slide. The landfill, the red area is that area that is. The defined or delineated plume. And if you look to the directly east of the landfill and north of. Beechwood Road, you'll see a small section there that's on the Martin property. This is private property beside the landfill. I'll just point out there's a contaminant attenuation zone. I'll talk about that later and you can see the dotted line. The property that is being proposed by waste management. They have bought most of that. Some of it is public land and they intend to use that to contain the contaminated groundwater. So the recent developments, waste management a year ago submitted applications. To get approval for their latest environmental monitoring plan. The contaminant attenuation zone that dotted line area I showed earlier. And a controversial purge well system. To manage the contamination onto the neighboring Martin property. And perhaps most controversial of all, they're seeking approval to pump that contaminated water from the ground. And deposit it onto the surface in the in the. Stormwater control ponds south of the landfill. And as far as I know, and as far as our expert hydrogeologist knows, this is the first time such a a proposal has been considered by Ontario. It's a very strange approach. So just to focus in a little bit on this hydraulic control system. And the can. Contaminant attenuation zone. I've made a couple of maps here that just get us a bit closer. So if you see on the right hand side of this slide, three wells, those are the purge wells. You can see the Martin property is right there just east of that. And you can see on this slide, the stormwater ponds, you can just barely see the bottom on this slide, the bottom of the. Or the southernmost extent of the landfill. So that's the geography. And the concept is to pump the contaminated groundwater. Out of the ground, put it through a pipe and dump it directly into those stormwater ponds, which ultimately drain into the Beechwood ditch. And eventually across private lands and into the Maryville Creek. So our group met with ME CP a few weeks ago. And I believe council has seen. The the minutes from that meeting. The point of those minutes was to show that what we know at this point. Is that these applications still do not address our concerns, the ones we've expressed. And the expressed problems identified by our hydrogeologists. And that there's a serious threat to human health and the environment posed by these proposals. But in spite of that, it appears ME CP is on the urge of approving these these applications. So the first problem with the hydraulic control system is that there's no evidence yet that it could even work. It has been used in other environments where it's not a fractured limestone base. With success, but this is a completely different environment. And the testing they've done so far fifty six hours of pumping is ridiculously small amount of testing. To back up the concept of hydraulic control system in this environment. And worse than that, this could actually make things worse by drawing up saline. Solution from further down under the under the landfill. And bringing that to the surface, that's probably worse than the leachate itself. And the most. Gob smacking, if that's the right word. Proposal is to take this contaminated water and basically dump it into creek indirectly. So in the best case scenario, the proposal will lower the risk on the Martin property. But increase the risk on the downstream farmers and. Residents along Callahan Road. In the worst case scenario, as I said, it will make things much worse by bringing saline water to the surface and spreading it around. So two main conclusions I would like to leave with the council. First of all, this landfill should never have been put here. I mean, that's clear from all the evidence over decades. This is a wrong place for any landfill. And. By directing inference, therefore, there should never be an expansion. As you may well be aware of the Beechwood Road Environmental Center proposal, which is effectively. A four times expansion of the Richmond landfill on that site is still out there looming. And the environmental assessment could start any day. And that's ridiculous given the the history. And secondly, the currently proposed solutions. Make no sense, at least not to us. And they are potentially very dangerous. So I listed a few options of things that council could consider doing. The first is they could confirm earlier councils resolutions saying we are not a willing host for for an expansion. Once the applications are are approved. And we expect that within the next few weeks. At least that's what we were told. There's a fifteen day appeal period. Council may wish. To do to do that. Or alternatively, council may wish to partner with. Time the Nega Township ourselves, possibly the MBQ and others to submit a combined appeal. That's that is an option. References. I believe you have the Will Fruland report, which is the basis of our concerns for the current proposals. And I believe you have the minutes from the meeting with ME CP. For those who haven't seen this, this is an option. I'm happy to let anyone on council have a copy of this. The book Fighting Dirty. It's the history. It's good reading. Our own website, leakyland.com has a huge amount of information. If you are really addicted to the story, you're welcome to. Spend some time on that website. And of course, anytime you have any questions, you're be more than welcome to contact any of the concerned citizens. We'd be happy to help with any. Research you'd care to take. So thank you for your attention. If there are any questions, it'd be my pleasure to answer those.
Thank you, Ian. Is there any questions, Mr. Monroe at all with respect to his deputation? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through you. Mr. Monroe, you mentioned that the groundwater would be. Ditched, taking it to the Marysville Creek, which eventually runs into the Bay of Quinte, correct?
That is correct.
And does the Quinte Conservation Authority have any? Part in this?
Not not to my knowledge. We have, they have been involved in some of the EA work in the past, but to my knowledge, they are not monitoring ME CP's work. In terms of the. Delineation of the landfill.
Would they would they monitor the outflow from Marysville Creek into the bay? Like, would anyone be doing testing there?
I don't believe so. The no waste management does monitor Marysville Creek at the Boundary Road. They don't monitor further downstream. The Beechwood ditch would join Marysville Creek further downstream. So yes, there's a possibility it could be missed.
I'm visual. I need a map of all of this. So I'm sure I'll find it on the web.
I'd be happy to send you a map.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Hicks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Through your sorry through your worship. What is what is the distance from their their ponds? To the ditch in relationship to the creek?
So the ditch, the main east west road or line there, the blue line is Beechwood Road. And the ditch, of course, is break beside that. So the ponds are between the landfill and the Beechwood Road and they drain. You can, I think you can just see the the drainage coming off the the west end of the the final. Pond there. So it's a hundred meters ish.
Yeah, just wasn't really clear on our version of the map here when we try to zoom in on it. So from the pond to the. The Beechwood Drain Ditch, you're saying is about a hundred meters.
Approximately.
And from the Drain Ditch to the Marysville Creek, what kind of time, what kind of range?
Ooh, that, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. It could be a couple of kilometers. It it goes across people's farmlands and whatnot. It it crosses the the flow crosses the Boundary Road or the Desert Anto Road. About. Half a kilometer south of the Marysville Creek, but they eventually do reconnect. Further west. Exactly where? Not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Deputy Deputy Mayor Calver. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Panal.
Thank you through your worship, Ian. You're talking about them pumping from the whales over into across through a pipe into the storage ponds. When is that anticipated to to begin?
Presumably, as soon as they have approval from ME CP, so like. I I assume they would wait for the fifteen days for people to potentially appeal, but it could start within weeks.
And the fifteen days would start when?
The it starts the day they publish the approval on the environmental bill of rights registry. So we're monitoring that every day. My pleasure to let council know when it comes up to to let you know the fifteen days has begun. If if that would be helpful, be happy to do that.
I I think that's important.
Be my pleasure.
You'll catch it faster than we would.
Be my pleasure. And do I email Jessica? Would that be the best approach? Okay.
Yeah, I think that's that's probably the best. Yeah, thanks, Ian. There's any other questions or comments?
No, go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Sorry, just one more follow up to that fifteen days. And you're also speaking about the town of Greater Napanee recertifying that we're not a willing host. And that's also a fifteen day, you said something about.
You can do, you can do that at your pleasure, at your leisure. That's there is a requirement under Bill one ninety seven for a company interested in building or expanding a landfill, large landfill, to get support from the host community. So if if you were to pass that a resolution of that type, that would be pretty discouraging for Waste Management to for their concept of starting an EA for a landfill that's not going to be well received.
That's great. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Penel. And are there any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Ian, the leachate problem, I understand what what you're talking about as far as has has anybody ever come up with a concrete solution to the leachate spreading out like? Like it didn't Waste Management at one time suggest digging up the old dump and moving it over to a liner and like, I I'm just asking, I'm not promoting that, I'm just asking about. Sometimes we don't like something that's being done or we think it's going to cause a problem, but I always like to look at alternatives and what is the actual solution to it? I'm just, if you if you I don't know if there's a question there for you or not, but.
I I think I hear a question. I'm happy to answer what I think is your question. First of all, I'm not a professional hydrogeologist. I've learned a lot about such things over twenty five years of studying this. The simple answer to your question is, don't build landfills on such sites. Because once it's into a fractured bedrock scenario, there's no solution. There really is no practical useful solution to that. In a scenario where there's a natural clay substrate underneath the landfill, the concept of a purge well system makes perfect sense and has been done. There's a lot of advantages in building a landfill on a clay base, but one of them is in an emergency, you could do that. You could literally dig a trench, capture the leachate as it's flowing away from the landfill, pump it out, treat it, everything's fine. You can't do that in a fractured bedrock. It would make almost certainly make things worse because of the blasting or the digging, you would open the cracks, you would you could send the leachate in a completely new direction. It it could be way worse than just containing it and monitoring it. That's that's my non-professional advice.
Thanks, Ian, appreciate it.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Are there any other questions for Mr. Monroe? I think the only question I have, Ian, I don't think you or maybe you do have the ability to answer it, but probably Michael. At at some point, does the MECP have to come to the municipality with any of these plans that are there? They have out of the site? Or is this something that's self-contained within the MECP and Waste Management where municipality doesn't have to get involved?
I I think they will answer that the mechanism for that is the Public Liaison Committee. The council has a member on that and we're members of that. That's where these issues are discussed, but I have to say the last several meetings have been pretty thin. Where basically no useful information was actually presented. And it's only through our own digging and having meetings at MECP, et cetera, that we're able to keep track of these things. Otherwise, we would be presented with approved proposals and given fifteen days without any background to to respond. And so that's kind of why I'm here, because I'm pretty sure you are unaware of where this is at.
Yep, no, and and that's exactly it. I know that most of us weren't around when this whole process started with Waste Management, so for most of us, even in the last term of council, we we didn't really experience a lot of it, other than if you yourself had come to 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 provide that information. So I thank you for that, so. Counselor Penel.
Through you, Mayor, I am the council member that sits on the Public Liaison Committee and I can confirm that our last meetings have been more about, I I would say that they were mandatory to have them. That was it. It was five or ten minute, hey, how are you doing? Everything's okay. The world's wonderful, the Waste Management place, and that's about it. And but also to the the people who attend the Zoom meetings have fallen off as well. And I think probably because of the lack of information that's coming as well. So I can contest to that for sure.
Yep, great. Thanks, Dave. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir. Like I say, for most of us, this is a lot of new news and we appreciate.
Welcome to read the book.
I think I may actually have a copy of it. Thank you. But we appreciate you coming and I'll look for a motion to note and receive the the deputation of V M Monroe with respect to the Richmond landfill site. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Penel. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Next up is motions to accept unscheduled deputations. Is there anybody in the body of the council chambers that wishes to do an unregistered deputation? Seeing none. Thank you very much, folks. Great, Madam Clerk, I was just gonna ask you, we have a presentation from Avail Consulting. I believe it'd be Carrie Warner and Kathy Manners with respect to our Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan. And we weren't sure whether they're going to get in right at this time, but I see that they are. So good afternoon or good evening, ladies and and welcome, and I'll turn the floor over to you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting us and and waiting for us to to join you this evening. If it's okay, I did I go ahead and share my screen? I will do that now.
Yep, go ahead. Modern technology is wonderful.
It is amazing. All right. Are we seeing my screen?
Yeah, we are.
Okay, wonderful. So thank you so much for inviting Kathy and I to join tonight. We're here to provide an update for you and council on your community safety and wellbeing plan, which is a joint plan with Loyalist between Greater Napanee and Loyalist Township.
So just through the magic of technology, we just came from Loyalist and we're now here with you. We were just at the Loyalist Council just a couple of minutes ago. And this is the overview that you're going to see tonight. We're going to talk about the community safety and wellbeing framework that's developed by the Ministry of Solicitor General. Then we're going to talk about the importance of community safety and wellbeing, the role that the municipality plays in community safety and wellbeing, the approach that we took to be able to create your plan, what your actually plan looks like from at a glance, so one page. And then we'll talk about the governance structure that's important to move this plan forward, some key elements of implementation, and then your next steps.
So these plans kind of came into effect through a mandate through the government and their demonstration, their commitment to supporting communities by developing a provincial approach. And the provincial approach and the booklets that accompanied, leading up to the mandate around planning were in the works for well over a decade. So this wasn't just a a quick idea that they had. And really, these plans fall in under the province of Ontario's Bill one seventy five under the State for Ontario's Act. Where it requires that every municipality in the province of Ontario that the council shall prepare and by resolution adopt and implement a community safety and wellbeing plan. So as mentioned, municipalities could plan independently and just do their own plan, or they could plan with partner municipalities. And that really took different shape around the province, depending on the municipalities, their relationships with their border communities, how they share services, where they access services, their policing detachment boundaries. So in this case, this plan is being prepared, has been prepared for the town of Greater Napanee and Loyalist Township. On the right hand side, this is lifted directly from the Solgen's framework. And this is really when when people talk about community safety and wellbeing and they talk about the bullseye framework, this is what they're talking about. And we know that the ministry wants us to look at planning and response in kind of through four different lenses. So the red is that, you know, that critical nine one one emergency response, your your police, your fire, your ambulance, that the very urgent needs. The yellow is kind of that just outside that immediate risk, but still an elevated risks. We think of the good work of the situation tables and and they would kind of fit into the yellow. And then the blue, looking at planning through prevention. So we think of our public health partners that do a great job at looking at prevention and then social development. And social development on at that outer ring is really where we want to be if we're going to make the kind of the biggest impact between prevention and social development. So the work that was done with with the development of your plan was really looking at kind of targeting it through the lens of the blue and the green, so that we were really trying to look at upstream approaches to some of the areas of risk that were identified or areas of focus for the plan, because that's where you're going to have the the greatest impact. The more work you do in the green and the blue, the smaller the yellow and the red become. We knowing that we're always going to have the need for the yellow and the red, and there's lots of great work that's happening in that space. And quite often, a lot of, you know, community efforts and resources kind of happen in the red and the yellow, because that's what's kind of on fire in communities that require that that attention and response. So great opportunity for community safety and wellbeing and the planning to really kind of step outside of that and look at the green and the blue. Along the left hand side of that, the ministry asks you to ask communities to, when you're planning, have a focus on intersectoral collaboration, information sharing and also performance measurement. So being able to measure what you're doing and the impact.
So we know that you care about your communities and when Solgen was developing community safety and wellbeing framework, they chose this ultimate goal of sustainable communities where everyone feels safe, has a sense of belonging, opportunity to participate, and where individuals and families are able to meet their needs of education, healthcare, food, housing, income, social and cultural expression. So we've built your plan with that with that aspiration in mind and that vision in mind. And as Carrie said, the ultimate importance of your community safety and plan will will be about expanding the network relationships and and that intersectoral collaboration, the information sharing and exchange of knowledge that will happen with your plan and the data intelligence that will grow as you start to work through your plan. So for your residents, you know, we know that it's important for you to improve equity, access and quality and connections and support for the people that live in Greater Napanee.
So quite often we're asked, well, what is the role of the municipality in this? Because it feels that off, we often hear that it feels like it's a little bit arms length or, you know, a looser connection to some of of the pieces that's in the framework. So the initial initial support that's required by the municipalities, given that they were kind of tagged in to kind of champion these plans, is to do the planning and the development of your plan and adopt it and then post it. Then you'd want to notify Solgen that your plan has been adopted and posted. And then very quickly, you you would want to, between yourself and Loyalist, in this case, identify those municipal reps that will, you know, start to get to the the action of the plan, which is convening, reconvening that the governance structure. So there was a start of that during the development of your plan by forming an advisory body. And as you could probably see in the in the large document, the plan, the recommendation is to work with those advisory body members and actually expand that table with a few key other stakeholders or organizations based on how the strategies kind of evolved and developed in the plan. You'd want to have some of those voices there. So the municipality would just start that work, getting that kind of governance structure together to have that initial conversation around, okay, who should lead this? Because these plans absolutely need a bit of a point person or a champion, just to be kind of that that focal person, the the glue that's going to kind of hold. You know, the the implementation pieces in place. And then ongoing, once that's done, ongoing that the municipalities would want to support and facilitate any of the strategies that are in the plan, especially the ones that maybe have maybe a little bit more of a municipal interest or focus or subject matter expertise. And then to work with, you know, those local and countywide partners to form up some of those other other groups. And you're going to see it on a an upcoming slide, what the other groups that we're talking about. And then while Solgen hasn't issued any specifics around what they will require, they have let communities know and and, you know, Kathy and I attend some of these sessions, group sessions with them, that they will have some expectation on reporting in the future, even though they haven't given a a framework or a template to follow, they're they're still kind of thinking that through, but there will be some expectation that municipalities provide some type of update on the work that is happening in the implementation phase of their plan.
So we thought we'd just quickly go over the approach that was taken to planning. So one of the first steps in the process is to identify your areas of risk, and that is often informed by data. So there was a list there of the different data sources that we were able to to gather for your community. A large part of that was Stats Canada data, public health data, policing data, two one one data and other community plans that were reviewed along the way. Then we took that information and started to create themes or areas of risk and went out and did some community engagement. So tested that with resident surveys. And then town halls to be able to give people an opportunity to voice and discuss these areas of focus. And then from there, we also went to stakeholders, individual one-on-one meetings where we discussed in more depth, again, these different areas of risk to try to get as much information we could on the community.
So this page is kind of the calls notes or your plan at a glance, plan on a page, if you will. So just to walk you through it, across the left hand, left hand side, across the top, you have the first two boxes and those are the areas of risk or areas of focus that related to safety. And so the risk identified or the concern identified was related to physical environment. And how could the community potentially optimize community spaces to be more inclusive, more accessible, more inviting, safer? Based on people's perceptions of where they felt safe. And then also around personal and property safety. And so, you know, there is a, you know, a conversation around and it happens in every community around real and perceived. And so there's merit to both. And so really unpacking that and the implementation and through the strategies is going to probably do wonders for for some of that in your people's perceptions and and actually taking active steps to making them safer, making them feel safer and taking active steps towards safety. The other three related to wellbeing and they were looking at the concern around potentially limited or more restricted access to supports and services than than they need, also around community connectedness. So knowing that your community, the communities in this plan are growing and wanting to maintain that small town feel, but also being opening to new people that are coming in, how do you balance that out? And so that takes a little bit of thought and strategy. And so you want to kind of be thinking about that now, not twenty years from now, or maybe you know, that it it feels different in the community for people. So that's why that made it into the plan and also social isolation. We know that COVID has had an incredible impact on people's connection to their community, even those that were really connected before may not feel as connected now. So that's why that made it into the plan and and also to address isolation. And then mental health and addiction, Kathy and I can tell you that if you look, I think in any plan across the province, mental health, every plan we've looked at, and we've looked at a lot of plans has identified mental health and addictions. It is, it it was in the plans, it would have been in the plans before COVID, but it's it's certainly a bigger concern post-COVID. So when you look at those five areas of of risk and then you flip back to the left hand side of the screen, you can see the bullet points under each one of those, and those are your actual strategies. Like we've identified the areas of risk, so what are we, what are we as a community wanting to do about it? And that's what those bullet points are. So you may or may not be able to read it on this slide, but it's certainly this is taken right from your plan and you will see this plan at a glance in your plan.
So, you know, it takes a takes a community to implement a community safety and wellbeing plan. So what you'll end up finding out that that there'll be needs for addressing these factors at the individual organization at system level. And we had great conversations at at each of those levels. And we certainly have great people in your community that want to be involved in implementing the community safety and wellbeing plan. We did have great support from a group of people that formed the initial advisory body. And through a lot of the individual stakeholder consultation, more people came forward who would like to be a part of the advisory body. So one of the first steps we'd like you to to consider is to identify a champion or a lead that can really move that advisory body forward. We've seen in other communities the need for local tables We've seen in other communities uh the need for local tables um that would uh report up to the advisory body. So in this case, we're suggesting one for safety for those two areas of safety that Carrie just reviewed with you and one for well-being, the three areas of risk that were identified under well-being. And then um for your community specifically, we we are suggesting a youth local table as a way of kind of future-proofing your community and and getting young people involved in community safety at an early stage.
Just to add to that, uh you know, you'll see peppered throughout your plan, a lot of references to youth and concern around youth, whether it be mental health or education, um or keeping youth in the community for the future, making sure there's jobs. And so that's really that youth table, uh and Kathy used the word future-proofing, which I love, is really looking at um building your capacity for your community through that that next generation. And so um that could be a very, very successful uh piece of of the of your success is the youth table. We actually hold out a lot of hope for your community around that, something because what we heard and uh the potential for what that table could do. So when we're talking about the next phase, which is uh implementation, um provided you, you know, adopt this plan, uh there's, this is kind of a visual that um you know, you might wanna refer to to think about, you know, we have our strategies and maybe we can figure out next steps, but just so we're not missing anything. So on the left, you see safety, you see those two areas of risk, and you know, you've got some strategies in your plan to address those. And then on the right side, you have well-being. Those are your three areas of risk, and you've got strategies in the plan that will guide your work in addressing those. Then in that uh circle in the middle, there's a couple of key uh reminders that are lifted from the framework that are tucked in there. So again, you're, you know, looking at the top there, it says social development. Remembering that when you're thinking of strategies, try and think in the green about, you know, policy, um you know, kind of built environment, all those things that kind of change the the trajectory. They're not kind of reactive. So you want to, you know, focus on the green. And then prevention on the right-hand side there, again, the blue uh piece. So those two outer parts of the ring. And then on the left-hand side, there's those three reminders that the government uh has said, hey, when you're planning, when you're thinking of ideas and you're attempting this, make sure that you're considering intersectoral efforts, that they're and that they're collaborative and that you um are, you know, sharing information and you're kind of expanding that knowledge in your community um or or spreading that knowledge in your community. And then measurement, a a measurement piece. So you know, you do all this great work. How do you know if it's making a difference? So figure out what those metrics are, and it doesn't have to be um ridiculously complex, but you know, key metrics, right? And so that's a conversation is distilling what will really tell the story if we're moving the needle forward on this. And then that would be the the metric or metrics that you'd be looking at. And then inside that, the purple, um whatever those shapes are, those are just some of those things that when you're looking at strategy and you're looking at implementing your plan, you're gonna wanna consider. So again, the governance, we've kind of uh put a proposed governance structure forward uh for your consideration. And then resources, understanding that there was no res- resources. This is always a question that comes from council when we do these presentations. But there was no additional resources put forward by uh the ministry at this point uh for the implementa- the development or the implementation of these plans. So how do you maximize the resources that you have and how do you leverage those? The strategies and the actions, staying true to your plan, uh policies and processes, what needs to change in order to to be able to mobilize some of your ideas and your efforts. And then again, uh looking at the data. So you have some kind of baseline data that's been established through the development of the plan, and then you're gonna identify some kind of key metrics. And then how often do you have to look at that? Is it every three years? It might really depend on the strategy and when the data is available. So this is just a a visual that might help the implementation of your plan to kind of pull some of all those thoughts together.
And we wanna leave you with a plan that uh that can be implemented. So we thought we'd leave you with a few next steps to to move this along. So um the first thing that needs to happen is you uh you need to um adopt your plan, make sure that you post and submit completion of the plan um to the Ministry of Service or General. We uh think it's important to convene your advisory body as quickly as possible so that you keep that momentum going around community safety and well-being and start to form those local tables. And then we've given you a year one kind of action list of things that we've heard that we feel are um attainable and and you're able to implement within your first year. And so that at least gives you a starting point for that advisory group and the local table to move forward.
Yeah, so obviously you'd be working on year one, but you'll notice in your plan, it actually has the three years mapped out for you if uh if you choose to follow it. Uh because some things kind of sequentially have to happen before other things. So we we did put some thought into that so that you didn't have to um try and, you know, piece it all together uh mentally before you could start actioning it. So we have uh and you'll notice as the plan reads, you will see each strategy and you will see those boxes at the bottom, those colored, whether they're blue or green boxes. And that says like year one, year two, year three, and that's a bit of a guide uh for you and your community to um be as successful as you can, because we know that th- this is hard work. The like, these areas of risk, these are even if you had full-time dedicated people, this is really, really hard work. These are like, you know, intractable, you know, societal challenges. So uh knowing that people are doing this as part of their regular job, we wanted to kind of give you as as much as we could to get you uh off and and running as smooth as possible. And that's it. So I'm gonna stop sharing and uh thank you for allowing us to present.
Yep, thank you, uh Carrie and Kathy. Does anybody on council have any questions with respect to the presentation that uh we've just listened to? Nope, seeing none. I guess the only question I have or maybe a comment uh for both Carrie or Kathy, I guess, is that with respect to the uh community safety and well-being and advisory bodies, because we're in partnership with uh another municipality, we would only have one advisory body. Am I correct with that?
That is correct.
And is there any limits with respect to the number of members that will be on that advisory body?
No, um no, there's no limits. Um this is, you know, the the framework does speak to having an advisory body, but there is no limit to how many people can be on it. But you have to think about what the function of that advisory body is. And if you want them to be able to make decisions based on, you know, the work or recommendations that are coming up from these local tables, um you want it to be agile enough and not just uh grow it, because you want it to be a strategic uh kind of decisive, subject matter expert table. So certainly in the back of, I think it's in the back of the plan, there is a a recommended advisory body kind of composition, but that that would change depending on who comes in the community and the strategy you're working on. And remember, when you're talking about any of these these tables, whether it be the local tables or the advisory body, like we've seen, um because we're supporting implementation in other communities, so they're, you know, just kind of a little farther down the road. Um they have a core that doesn't change. And then as the strategies change, they bring people in kind of ad hoc as guests, but they don't necessarily stay forever. They will stay just to maybe get that strategy up and moving. And then they move on to the next strategy and they bring in someone else. So it really is you know, all on how the group feels about the group composition. And that's something that uh you'll just have to maybe start with and then make those changes or modifications as you go.
Great, thank you. And um just one further question, I guess, because we have a uh a municipality here, where we have four lower-tier municipalities in 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 our upper tier and two lower municipalities, us and Loyalist have obviously this uh community safety and well-being plan, and then two municipalities will have a different one, I'm assuming. Do, would you or should you see any conflict or problems with that with respect to the going forward? Because we will only have one OPP detachment, I guess, that will be involved in it. But we do obviously share uh different services and social services and stuff like that, so.
Uh no, I, you know, I don't see it as a conflict. You have border communities uh outside of those municipalities. You have Kingston, and they all have different plans. You do see that some common threads through the plans across the province, especially the ones that are kind of closer uh in geography to each other. And so we we are always reminded and mindful that these partners that sit at the advisory body, they also sit at other tables as well. And so I think that the only risk you run into is the capacity of your community partners. So if um once the other plans are developed or plan is developed, I think there's an opportunity for um this this group, uh Napanee and Loyalist, to maybe meet. And that's what we've seen in other communities, that border communities meet, and they figure out what's what's similar, what partners are similar, and what they could work on together. Uh because that is really um, that's really key. I mean, there's is is not infinite resources out there to do this work. And so you have, like you say, one police detachment uh that kind of would govern and or um have the jurisdiction of both. So you you might be more judicious as to when you invite the police to sit on. You don't want them necessarily every table. Maybe they're at the safety table and one representative is at the advisory body. But it's really just um being respectful of the balance and the capacity and where things are aligned, that's great. And maybe even you can schedule meetings kind of back-to-back so that there there's different ways that we've seen communities kind of work around this. And and like, uh like I say, we're we're supporting seventeen other municipalities kind of indirectly through through the next phase. And so um it gets, you have to get creative with this because some of this work is being done in different pockets and some of it is not new and some of the partners are the same. And so it it's a little bit of thought, but if you if you get people talking and you communicate, you you'll find a way forward. And I don't see it being a conflict.
Yep, great. And I think you hit the nail on the head. There's this communication and collaboration is is the trick to it. So um is there any, uh go ahead, Counselor Shank.
Uh my question is for the girls, uh one of the ladies, uh it sounds to me that uh the province is going ahead mandating this, that we have the CSWB plan and what we have what we have in similarities to other municipalities and what can we work together and how we can go ahead this. So my question is to the ladies is what do you foresee is what they're gonna either download to us? Or are they gonna push a regional government? Or what are they doing? Is this just the tip of the iceberg? That it's like a first, first thing in a chess move that the province is mandating this to do. Because that's what I would read into this, is that there, this is the first approach that that the province is doing, getting all their similarities together. And then the next step is gonna come, the next step is gonna come, and the next step is gonna come. That's the way I read into this. Am I wrong? Please tell me I'm wrong.
I don't, I don't know that you're right. So through uh through your worship to the counselor in response, um they have not articulated any of that. If there is a bigger, deeper plan, we are actually not privy to that. And if I had a crystal ball, I would make very different decisions in my life. But I don't have that crystal ball and I I can't, I can't predict what the government is is, you know, um what where their thought is. But this was a long time in the making, um community safety and well-being. And I think that what we're seeing, not just in community safety and well-being, but in even application for grants, just at the organizational level, they're asking you to now demonstrate partnership, collaboration, measurement. So I think that this follows that same kind of uh flavor or vein of of the the many ministries, because this is uh interministerial. There's an interministerial group that meets on a regular basis around community safety and well-being, because this was all ministries coming together to agree on community safety and well-being. And so when you're looking at all those different ministries that all reflect different um you know, sectors uh in 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 the community, that's why they're asking for all of the, all of the different sectors to participate in this, because we know that you can't talk about housing without talking about income. You can't talk about income without talking about employment. So I think there is just a a greater awareness that um the silos only go so far. And so that's why this is kind of uh their idea. And you know, a lot of questions have come up about why the municipalities, why not at community-level organizations? Um but they really see the municipalities as um kind of that those focal points in communities that um do have a a very kind of neutral relationship with all the partners. And that's why uh they kind of tag the plans to the municipalities. So I don't know that that answers your question, but there is nothing that I can tell you that I've heard or seen that kind of speaks to a a bigger plan, whether that's the case or not. Um but I do know that their approach to this planning and and kind of what they've put in the mandate is reflective of what we're seeing in other um areas of the government and how they're awarding even funds and grants is that you'll partner on things and measure.
Yep, great. Uh thanks, Counselor Shank. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd just like to uh thank you ladies for for zooming in tonight. That was a very good presentation and uh it's something that obviously, we're gonna have to address in the near future here. So I know it's been a long time coming, but uh thank you for the work you've done on this, so.
And congratulations on your plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll look for a motion to note and receive the presentation of Avail Consulting's Avail Consulting with respect to the uh community and safety and well-being plan. Moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
It was great. Thank you. Next up is the adoption of the minutes with respect to regular session of council on May ninth, twenty twenty-three, and the special session of council. Uh May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. We'll look for a motion to uh uh receive those minutes. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Correspondence for information. I know we received quite a, quite a list of uh information uh correspondence uh uh with respect to the May twenty-third. Is there anything anybody wants to pull out and have a conversation about? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the correspondence for information items dated May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Motion carried. There's nobody opposed. Next up is correspondence for action, nine-point-two-point-one proclamation request, the longest day of smiles, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh we have a recommendation that council proclaim June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three as the longest day of smiles in the town of Greater Annapolis. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor and uh, thanks, Counselor Shank. A great smile. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any comments or questions with respect to proclaiming June eighteenth as the longest day of smiles in the town of Greater Annapolis? Seeing no comments, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Proclamation request, deaf-blind awareness month, June twenty twenty-three. We have a recommendation that council proclaimed June of twenty twenty-three as deaf-blind awareness month in the town of Greater Annapolis. So we'll look for a motion with respect to that proclamation. Moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any further comments or questions with respect to that proclamation in June of twenty twenty-three with respect to the deaf-blind awareness month? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. And lastly, but not, no, I guess it isn't lastly, we have a uh um registration for AMO twenty twenty-three delegations. We have a recommendation that council receive for information regarding the registration for AMO twenty twenty-three de- delegations and further that council provide direction with respect to requested delegations as applicable. Is there anybody that wishes to put forward any kind of a delegation? I know that we, I think we're talking about one already, but is there anybody that wants to put forward anything that we should be looking at for a delegation with AMO? Uh I know that uh I think there's some work being done, and I think it's probably uh work well worth doing with respect to our doing a delegation with the Ministry of Infrastructure with respect to some funding for our uh wastewater plant. Is, do you, uh you wanna comment on that, Mr. Pinson or or Jessica?
I think, Your Worship, we've, we've done some of that work with Peter and his crew for previous uh delegation to ministry. And I think we'll just take that, dust it off, and make sure it's up to date and have that pretty ready for presentation in August.
Yep, great, thank you. Uh I think that's, it it's it's a pretty good plan. I think we need to look at this sooner than later. And uh I know that a previous meeting that I had with the ministry that uh they seem to be very receptive to our, to our needs with respect to wastewater. So um I think a little friendly reminder wouldn't hurt uh at all at the AMO conference. Do you need a uh resolution with respect to that, Madam Clerk, or is that good enough for?
Through your worship, uh no counsel can just receive for information. This was just to ensure that if there's anything else council wanted us to submit for, that we didn't miss that opportunity.
Perfect. If there's nothing else, we'll note receive uh the registration for AMO twenty twenty-three delegations. Moved by Counselor Pinnell, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that uh motion? Opposed, motions carried. Finally, we have a request to amend the noise exemption. We have a recommendation that the noise exemption ish noise exemption issued under Resolution two sixty-seven twenty-three to Green Infrastructure Partners for May twenty-two to June second, for the purpose of completing milling and paving work on County One. County Road forty-one be extended to June ninth, twenty twenty-three. Did Madam Clerk, do you wish to comment on that at all, or?
Through your worship, I will just say that the contractor doing this work has been in extensive communication with all the surrounding businesses to this work area. Um they just need to reschedule the work and wanna make sure their noise exemption is covering the correct period.
Great. Thank you very much, Jess. If there's no questions or comments, we'll uh look for a motion. Moved by Counselor Pinal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business? I don't believe there is, but we'll ask anyway. Seeing none, committee reports. Uh, up first would be the Waste Diversion Committee Minutes. A recommendation that Waste Diversion Committee approved approved minutes of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three and draft minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-three be received for information. And I believe uh Counselor Martin, I think you're on the waste diversion. Is there anything you want to add to that before we uh uh we'll do the motion? Yep, great. Does uh I know we've all seen the report. Does anybody have any questions for Bill at all with respect to those reports? Seeing none, we'll look for a motion to um note and receive the information of the minutes of the Waste Diversion Committee approved for February fifteenth and for May tenth, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Pinal, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Arts and Advisory Committee, uh recommendation that the Arts Advisory Committee draft minutes of May second, twenty twenty-three be received for information. And I believe um Counselor Norrie, I think that's your their committee. Is it? Is there anything you'd like to add to that?
No, as written.
Perfect. Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Uh, if there's no questions of Counselor Norrie, we'll look for a motion to note and receive the minutes of the Arts Advisory Committee. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. Next up, the Market Square Advisory Committee and the Market Square Advisory Committee draft minutes of May fifteen, twenty twenty-three be received for information. I believe is that yours, Dave? Did you wish to comment on those uh those minutes at all?
Sure. Thank you, uh your worship. Uh, nothing really to comment on the uh the minutes themselves, but uh we met for the first time. That was our first meeting on the fifteenth. And I gotta say, we have a very energetic committee. And everyone's getting along so far, which is fantastic. And uh they're very chatty. So I think uh with with a lot of great ideas. So I think it's gonna be a great uh committee moving forward. Thank you.
Yep, great. Thanks, Dave. If there's no questions of Dave, uh we'll look for a motion to note and receive the Market Square Advisory Committee for May fifteen, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Pinal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, motions carried. The Downtown Advisory Committee minute minutes that the Downtown Advisory Committee draft minutes of May sixteen, twenty twenty-three be received for information. And I'm not sure, is that Andrews? That your committee? Ange? Is there anything you want to uh bring any attention to or no?
Uh, not not specifically your worship, just that it's uh so far a really good committee. Everyone's very engaged. And uh we've got two new residents involved as well. Um, and John takes excellent minutes. Thank you.
Thanks, Ange. Is there any questions or comments for Ange with respect to that committee report? Seeing none, uh we have a recommendation that the Downtown Advisory Committee draft minutes of May sixteen, twenty twenty-three be received. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor. Sorry, Counselor Hicks, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, when would we be able to uh address council on a a decision regarding the budget? Would that be from the next meeting?
I will allow Madam Clerk to comment that.
Through your worship, I believe that is just a couple agenda items down. My apologies.
Yeah, I think we got a staff report and I thank you for bringing that up because I had missed it too. So thanks. Uh, we need a vote on that, don't we? I think. All in favor? Opposed, motions carried. The Recreation Advisory Committee Minutes that the Recreation Advisory Committee draft minutes of May sixteen, twenty twenty-three be received for information. And I believe that's uh yours, Deputy Mayor Calvers. Anything you'd like to add to that? We're up eleven point five. Yeah, it's just for the minutes, Brian. I don't know if you want to comment on the minutes of the report or not. If not.
No, the minutes are actually uh pretty accurate there. We've uh we've got a great committee. Um, we've got a very wide uh range of of personalities in the room. Um, we got a lot of things sorted out for our first meeting. I think it went very well. Um, might have got a little off topic in some of the areas that aren't really recreation, but uh as new meetings go to feel everybody out, that's bound to happen. But I think we got a a great thing happening there. And uh like I say, very good group of people in it. Can't wait to go forward.
Great. Thanks, Brian. Uh, does anybody have any questions for Brian with respect to that report? Seeing none, look for a motion uh to note and receive the Recreation Advisory Committee Report for May sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that. Motion, opposed, motions carried. Market Square Advisory Committee Report Grant Application. There's a recommendation that council support the submission of an Ontario Trillium Foundation Grant for the purposes of leveraging the hundred thousand dollars budgeted by council for phase one remediation of Town Hall exterior, addressing the steps at the front of the building, readying the interior for use and landscaping the walk along Center Street for open space and flagpoles. Um, is there somebody that wanted to speak to that or is the report self-explanatory? Go ahead, uh, Counselor Pinal.
Uh, thank you, worship. Yeah, this is the uh hundred thousand dollars was budgeted and uh through the trillion uh grant pro application. Um, we're gonna be submitting that application, I think it's not been done already. And uh to to do the the uh to leverage it to see if we can get some more monies from the ministry and uh to do the work that's that's stated in the report. And the first one would be, you know, like painting the exterior and stuff like that. So it's self-explanatory, but uh I'm just wondering, uh, Mr. Zadaberg, when would we be hearing back from that?
Uh, through your worship, the application is due on uh June fourteenth. And I'm not sure the timing of when when we'll hear, but uh we've already met with a number of contractors to start building the uh the the quotes that have to go in with the application.
Thanks, Brett. Uh, if there's no further questions, we'll look for a motion with respect to the recommendation that I read out earlier. Moved by Counselor Pinal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motions carried. Uh, Downtown Advisory Committee Report, twenty twenty-three budget request and amendment to the committee mandate letter. We have a recommendation that council approved the proposed changes to the Downtown Advisory Committee mandate letter. And further, that council provide direction with respect to the budget proposal of thirty-one thousand five hundred submitted by the Downtown Advisory Committee for its activities in twenty twenty-three, including the engagement of a contracted staff member to assist with committee-related activities. Is there anybody that wants to speak to that? Maybe Counselor Hicks, did you want to speak to that or? Mr. Pinson?
Are you gonna try and race me to the buzzer?
My finger's already on it.
So I, okay, so I'll through your worship. We met last weekend. There was there was a desire on behalf of this committee to start out, understanding there's no money officially in in these committees presently. Uh, to start out with a budget to hire somebody to help with some of their activities, uh to do some of their promotions. Uh, it's listed uh in in the budget in terms of what those things were. Um, and as I explained to them, the only way to get that would be to formally come to council and look for approval outside of the normal budgetary cycle to to get that. So what we've given you is an outline of what that budget proposal would look like, a a basic um job description of what they're looking for in that person as well uh to do. Um, and then lastly, there was uh there were some draft changes or changes to the mandate letter submitted by council.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Pinson. Did uh he want to weigh in at all, Counselor Hicks or no?
Uh, through your worship, I would just like to state that um time is of the essence on this. We need to start planning for what um events we're going to hold uh downtown. Uh, hopefully, we can do some in conjunction with activities around the market square. We've now started holding our our meet meetings here in this building. Um, which is much more convenient for everyone that works downtown. The person, uh, the position that we're looking for is really critical. We need somebody that can devote the time and the hours to social media accounts in particular, and getting that that up and going again. So um I'm just looking for council's support on approving the budget request.
Great. Thanks, Council Hicks. Um, Madam Clerk, do we want to try and do this all in one fell swoop with respect to a motion? Or should we dissect this a little bit and see if we can, just in case there's sections of it that that are applicable and sections that aren't, I guess is the best way, but maybe.
Through your worship, your procedure of bylaw certainly speaks to uh breaking a motion into distinct parts and that that may be the best way to deal with this, as there are uh two to three distinct asks within this.
That's kind of what I was thinking is that may be easier if we break it apart and see where we get to then. Is council good with that? We'll break it apart and see where we get to then. Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
My own, I don't care if it's broken apart or not, but the point is is that uh if I read this correctly, it's forty-six thousand five hundred dollars they want to have on top of. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars, not exceed fifteen thousand dollars background information.
This is the proposed budget?
Yeah.
Sorry, I know this isn't.
All right, I I just was.
No, I think.
And it says in addition to the part-time social media, I write.
Yeah.
The right, I was reading what was in the. That's why I read it also. So the point was that's not including the flowers. So what do we be doing with the flowers in the two summer students? So I know what the total figure is.
Uh, I don't know if.
Thousand dollars has been delegated for beautification.
Sorry, how much was that, Ange?
Which is all of the flowers.
Which is how much was it?
Ten thousand.
Ten thousand?
That's bridge baskets, forty-eight waterless hanging baskets, fourteen large planters, six troughs, uh, eight small planters at the Hogle parking lot there along. Yeah, I think that's everything. And then the two summer students.
And uh what are the wages for the summers? Is that what you're looking for, Counselor Shank?
Well, they report to Chris Brown. I don't know what the wages are. They're they're not just specifically for beautification. That's my understanding. They will be involved in the planning of the flowers, but I don't know if that's their only job.
Maybe Mr. Prinsen.
So what we through your worship, so what we worked in the initial plan for the downtown core is to pay for the students for the flowers as well as the flowers themselves. So this ask is on top of on top of that one right there.
Yep, go ahead, Counselor Shank, yeah.
So Counselor Hicks, is it forty-six? Like I read it or thirty-one? That includes this uh the part-time staff member.
Well, as I said, I don't, through your worship, I don't know what the staff wages are.
That one person.
That is the there's fifteen thousand requested for a six-month contract.
Yep.
Seven thousand five hundred for marketing activities, five thousand for a late-night shopping party, and four thousand dollars for Canadian flag-style banners, which will be left up year-round until there's a request from other groups to replace banners, change the map. So forty-one thousand five hundred dollars covers all the flowers and the things listed here.
Sorry, what was that, Counselor Pinal?
Sorry, I I think the the way that I'm reading the report and what was just said off of this uh uh budget, if I'm reading correctly, we're still short that twenty-five hundred dollars up to fifteen thousand dollars. I think that still needs to be included, it needs to be added upon the thirty-one five, the way I read it.
Maybe Counselor Hicks, can you clarify it? Or maybe Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk looks like she's got this looked after.
Through your worship, I'm not affiliated with this community or committee, but it but it is my understanding of this report that the total ask from the advisory committee is thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, which includes the part-time social media coordinator, marketing, the shopping party, and the banners. That would be in addition to and outside of the budget the council already approved, which had the ten thousand dollars for flowers and the wages of the part of the summer students which are um being provided to do this work of looking after the flowers. Um, but it is the only ask tonight is for thirty-one thousand five hundred outside of your already approved budget.
Great, thank you. Does that clarify? I I think that's we have, we have a budget for it, so it's gonna have to come from reserves. Is that that just a bit, I think?
That's you, right, your worship?
So where do, uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
So they're looking, I I thought we had a somebody doing the uh media and stuff already. Are we gonna drop that or? The Bay of Quinney Marketing or whatever?
So the Bay of Quinney Marketing Board focuses on Greater Nappany. So from thirty-three highway right through to Roblin, they they encompass the entire Greater Nappany. The Downtown Advisory Committee is to bring the attention to the downtown core, which in conjunction with the Market Square Advisory Committee. Um, because eventually this is gonna be the jewel and the crown, right? And things will revolve around hopefully this building, so we can get the people back back downtown. So the the Bay of Quinney Marketing does nothing for the downtown core.
May I, your worship?
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
So, sorry, Mr. Prince. To Deputy Calver's statement, I think the easiest way to understand this is these are the activities that were previously funded by the BIA. They no longer have any funding. They are now coming to the municipality for the funding for which they previously got funding for these activities.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
You know how I hate spending money, but you've got to have the talent. You have to give the committee the the tools to do it, to see how it goes. Sure, you could tax with a local improvement, you could do other things, but for this year, let them run with it. Let's get the other thirty-one five, I write for them, I write, and have their function. If you don't have a vibrant community and uh see how it works, see how it runs, way we go. And next year during budget process, we'll have to find out all what the total, what it worked, what didn't work, you know what I mean? And how is it, how is it going to be funded? All right. So we're one community. Let's make it look as good as we can. And uh let them go. It's not forty-six, it's thirty-one five. You lost me at forty-six. All right, you got me at thirty-one. All right, so there we go. Thank you.
I guess, uh, sorry. Did we have somebody over?
I'm sorry, my only comment would be through to the treasurer to make sure that she would understand how to source that funding.
Yeah, go ahead, Nicole. Before I speak, go ahead.
So through your worship, um if you can include in your resolutions specifically where this money is to come from. Um, if it's coming from reserves, I would suggest that it needs to come from our working capital reserve. Uh, but if we could include that in the motion.
Sorry about that, Nicole. I was writing stuff down. Okay, we will ensure that we include that in the motion. Is there any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Pinal.
I'm not gonna be very popular here, but when we are doing our budgets, we went to staff and we asked everybody to cut, cut, cut. And with that being said, we took monies out of relevant equipments, maintenance. I mean, we have roads that are deteriorating. Um, when it's dry out, go go take a drive round up north in the word three. I don't know how I can be in favor of such dollars when I've asked staff to cut so much. And and still be true to all the all the other taxpayers. And and still be true to all the, all the other taxpayers out there. When the BIA was there, there was a levy to take care of this monies. The BIA is no longer there, but it looks like to me by reading these reports that. I don't know what kind of words I want to use, but. The structure or the mentality or or the events or whatever I want to try to pick here on my my mind, they they still want to go forward with this stuff. But not use their monies to pay for it. So I have a really hard time and I need somebody to try to convince to me why I should vote for this.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor.
Through your worship, um, Counselor Penel, you say use their monies. What monies are you referring to?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a BIA levy that was charged to pay for this budget.
The levy, those monies, when the BIA was dissolved by the last council, all the monies reverted to the town. So there is no money because there is no BIA, which is why we. We cut a lot uh, from the budget request. Because it's for six months, it's to. Get things moving again, to get the merchants engaged again, but there is no money in a little bucket called BIA leftovers. So we're a committee of council, so we have to come to council with the ask. So I'm not sure what monies. You're referring to.
Respectfully through you, Mr. Mayor, what I'm trying to say is prior, when the BIA was there, there was levies for their budget. There's no budget, there's no BIA, and now we're asking to go into reserves to pay for these functions. That weren't budgeted for. And on the back of us cutting every piece of everything else in our whole budget. That we've been cutting. And now outside of a budget, we're asking, there's an ask for these monies. That we have to go to reserves for. And I, I, I'm sorry, I just, I just can't see spending the money.
Counselor Hicks, no. Counselor Shank, go ahead.
I totally understand what Counselor.
I'm not disagreeing, I'm just.
To make a call of spade a spade is BIA, when they had the BIA, they've they've funded all this thing a hundred percent, which I understand. All right, I've been at it this long enough. All right, then you go ahead and they voted not to have the BIA, but they still want to have it funded and have the functions. So I could, so, but the point is. There might be the owners there, but not everybody that has a store down there owns the building. All right, so the way I'm looking at it, if you don't, if we just throw them to the wind, say, well, you're on your own, have a nice day. What are we doing? Like when we took out the parking meters years ago, there was a revenue there of like, I don't know, fifty or sixty thousand dollars. All right, to help people get downtown, park downtown, you know what I mean? If that could help, that came out of everybody's coffers. Yes, I understand everybody cut, but if we don't. Throw, I hate to say this analogy, throw a dog a bone, and then you're just gonna let them starve, you know what I mean? They're dead before they, you know, since even having a committee here that, you know what I mean? Cause what's the sense of having a committee if you don't give them any funds to go ahead and do it? And I hate spending money. I totally agree with what Counselor Penel has said. I agree with him to a a certain. To a large, large thing, but at the same time, you have to think of the store owners and their viability. And you know, when somebody comes through town, you're gonna lose the big bright light show, but at least you know what I mean? If you have some planters, it looks neat and tidy. You know, and if that helps the customer stay downtown or whatever, you have to understand a commercial property owner pays a lot more taxes. All right, on what their rate is on a just a straight residential rate also. So if I throw them thirty one thousand, when you figure out how much is done down there. Yeah, I'll help you. That's the reason why.
Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
So when the survey was completed and the answer came back, no, to not reinstate the BIA. I'm sure that we could do a quick poll of the downtown merchants that rent. From a landlord who do not own the building and ask them if they got a a decrease offered on their rent. So these people are struggling, uh, you know, they had the big dig, we had COVID, we're, we need to help. Get people back into Nappany and to see what a vibrant little town we are. And the way to do that, the downtown shopping party has always been a success. Beautification is absolutely necessary. I mean, look at what you see when you drive in from the east end of town. It it's a. We need something that when they get to that one point, it's like, oh, it was, it was worth that little drive. Like you have beautiful Springside Park, then you have the construction zone. And I don't know, I I understand what you're saying, Counselor Penel, but. I feel very strongly that basically if we don't show some degree of support for the merchants. Downtown, then it's. It's, as as Mike said, it's, it's not gonna be good and we're basically killing our our downtown because we're not showing any faith or support.
Go ahead, Counselor Shank.
This is the last thing I'll say. Now to the trails. When we went ahead and uh, years ago, we were fixing up the road on South Shore A Bay Road. We applied for one-third, one-third, one-third funding. We came in under budget, all right? And so we went ahead and said, hey, you know, what else can we do to the town? Did we continue the road and fix out some other roads in in our area? I said, we at the council at the time said no. So what we did is we went ahead and the boardwalk that was currently that. Tons of people use from Springside Park, all right? We went ahead and that used to be a rickety hazardous thing at one time. Let's take that money from our one-third, one-third, one-third funding from the South Shore A Bay Road, all right? And let's fix up that walking trail, then and then eventually have that continue all the way around, around Springside Park, all the way back on this side. Through the Gibberds, uh, you know, hopefully through there, then all the way around. So we have a nice walking trail. And. Lot of people don't realize that's exactly what happened, but that's what happened. We all came together and we went ahead and we took some of that and we put it downtown. And look how many people, when I drive through town, through Center Street and I'm on my way home and I see a lot of elderly people walking on a safe trail, it's wide enough that you're not bouncing it. Sometimes. You gotta do what you gotta do, you know?
Thanks, Counselor, uh, Counselor Shank. Go ahead, Nicole, I see your hands up back there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm just wondering if it would make sense to get council's decision on. For future years, if it's council's wishes to intend to support this, would we be reinstating a BIA levy? Because if for this year, with final tax bills having to come out within the next week, we do not have the capacity to. Include that. However, if we, if council's wishes are to provide this money to the downtown committee. We would need to be pulling it out of reserves, which is essentially money from all of the ratepayers within the town. So for future years, would the plan be to reinstate a BIA levy to fund this or maintain it through regular tax base a hundred percent?
I think you took the words right out of my mouth. That's where I was gonna go with Nicole, once I got finished hearing from everybody. Does anybody else have any other comments before I speak? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
Yeah, Dave, I totally get where you're coming from. I'm up in the industrial park. Um, we pay a lot more taxes than the people downtown. We get zero out of it. The downside is, is we need to support the beautification of our downtown. And I think for this year, we have to support this amount and then take a look at that next year's budget. I get where you're coming from. We've asked, you know, everybody to cut, cut, cut. And if we keep cutting, we've only got one taxpayer and we need to look after the downtown, so we keep those taxpayers coming into town and spending.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Does anybody else want to speak first? Go ahead, Counselor X.
So this will be my final word on it. The, this is. This is this year. So I think a lot of people were hoping that the BIA would in fact be reinstated, that the vote would be that way. And then we would not be sitting in front of council, asking for money, or if we were, it would be a stopgap until the levy. Was reinstated and the money coming back in. I don't think at this point forty one thousand dollars is too much to invest. In the downtown. I really don't. Look what you're spending. Look, look what you're trying to do with the market square. And if you don't support what's going on around the market square. You're gonna have a bunch of, you're you're gonna have a bunch of empty buildings, basically is what it's gonna come down to. So we either show support or we don't.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Counselor Shank, go ahead.
To your question, Nicole, that nobody has answered. Is that, uh, the way I would look at it is the, the money this year, you're gonna have to take it out of reserve because we haven't budgeted for. All right, so in the fall, because we're not gonna wait until January to start our budget process, which we're gonna start earlier, all right? In the meantime, you're gonna see how they've ran with it. Now there's local improvement. You can go ahead, you can do a BIA levy or whatever. I don't know what the legal is. But if if they want a lot more than they're receiving, you know what I mean? And want a lot more, well, then that will have to be discussed, but right now, I would just go ahead, let them do what they do. But in the meantime, you can look at what can we do to offset it? What can, you know, because they are getting the direct benefit of that, all right? But what is palatable and what isn't palatable? I don't want to give them on one side and then hammer them taxes and they, you know, back again also, but. Did that with the garbage. So all I'm saying is, is that, you know, you have to look at that and go from that, you know, at a later date.
Thanks, Counselor Shank. Is there anything else before I ramble on myself? Seeing none, go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Could I just say, I, I think this is a transition year going away from the BIA to. A non-BIA downtown, so. I still think we need to support them and and I don't know what the amount of money was that was levied from the BIA that was left over that. Went to the town, but is that money not available to put back into the downtown? Even though it's BIA money, it then became town money?
Mr. Princeton, did you want to tackle that one? I think I probably could, but maybe it's best that you do it.
Your worship, I can start. So we, we've had many discussions around what was left over upon the dissolution of the BIA in. Twenty twenty-two and those monies that were spent in support of beautification, other activities in twenty twenty-two. And understanding that part of the beautification, or for the most part, the beautification this year is being funded from the leftovers of that money. And I think we've gotten to the point that we've had the discussion with the downtown merchants to be able to get past the previous BIA funding and into a new model of. This transition year as Counselor Martin states, and then potentially a, a better model into the future.
Good biller, did?
Pretty much. And I'm just saying, we need to support the downtown cores for sure. And like I said, this is a transition year. We got six months or so to to put in this year. We're gonna work on the budget for the fall, so. Nicole's the answer will be coming to her in the fall. What we're gonna do as far as budget goes, so, but for this year. We have no choice but to take it from reserve. That's my thoughts.
Thanks, Counselor Martin. Is there anything else? I guess, and and some of what I've got to say has already been said. I I agree is that twenty twenty-three is a bit of a transition year. We are all expecting that maybe possibly that the BA, BIA was going to be resurrected and then we wouldn't be having these conversations because there would be a levy. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. And we've defaulted to a certain extent, so we've gone from a, a. A business improvement area, which was a board of council to a downtown advisory committee, which is a committee of council. So obviously, there was no funding, there is no funding, and so the only avenue for any kind of funding for that committee to get is to come back to council. This, the plan that we're seeing tonight is not sustainable, to be quite honest with you. It's something that we might be able to do for twenty twenty-three, but it's not sustainable going forward. So as Nicole said, that I think we really need to look at if if we're going to continue to try and fund something like this, that we have to look at a levy. What I would hope, what I was hoping to see rather than a budget request would be to see specifics. Come back to council with respect to specific expenses that were going to be costed. So, and just for an example, the late night. Shopping party in December, I would sooner have seen requests to say that it's going to cost four thousand eight hundred seventy-two dollars, come to council as a request for that money. And show what that money is being spent on as opposed to a budget request where we're getting numbers that are rounded off. I was hoping to see it that way as opposed to the the manner that we've seen it tonight, but that's not what we're looking at tonight. So. In any event, I don't believe the model that we're looking at tonight is sustainable by any stretch of the imagination, and we do have to look at some form of. Uh, if we're going to continue to try and do this, we have to look at some form of a levy, and I'm not even sure that's even possible, but that's something that maybe staff can look into in the not-too-distant future. Whether a levy can be applied with respect to a downtown committee as opposed to a BIA, which is board, but that's something obviously we can look at, so. That's my thoughts with respect to it, but we do have a request here tonight with respect to a number of matters in the, in the. Recommendation and I'll eat, I don't know how you want to deal with it, whether we want to deal with it all as one resolution, whether we want to break it up into a number of different resolutions. And if there's any thoughts to how we do that. Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, worship, uh, Jessica, so can we do the mandate letter? Which is, I think, fairly easy and adopt the changes that were discussed and and uh, written up at the committee meeting. If we could do the mandate letter first. And then do the job posting perhaps second, and then the budget request as a third item.
Through your worship, I don't see any issues with doing that. I will note, um, in the committee report under your alternative options. Number two, uh, there is some potential wording there and that does note that for, as the treasurer has stated for the funding. That the funding source needs to be identified and as well for the communications person that the reporting relationship needs to be identified because. Unless council specifically delegates, so committees do not have the authority to assign workloads and responsibilities. To municipal staff.
So what you're suggesting is to maybe look at tweaking alternative option number two. I think that's what you're trying to suggest to us, Madam Clerk.
Through worship, I believe Counselor Hicks was proposing to deal with this in three separate motions, but I believe your starting wording is there in that alternative option two.
Okay, well, let's entertain a motion. How do we, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to put a motion on the floor and we'll just go piece by piece if need be. So is there anybody that wants to put a motion on the floor with respect to uh, the matters before us here, the Downtown Advisory Committee Report twenty twenty-three budget question? Counselor Hicks.
Through your worship, I'd like to move that we go with the option number two. So Jessica, I'll let you do the wording or the reading of that, if you like. And that we identify the funding sources, the um. Operating. Sorry, working capital reserves.
Yeah, sorry, Counselor X, I'm just making sure we got everything we need there, so. And that the communication position to report to, and it says insert, insert town staff position. Did you want to add to that?
May I request that it be the CIO?
Subject to the acquisition of the proposed services following all relevant town bylaws and policies. Mr. Benson, you're good with that?
I can work with that, your worship.
Thank you. So just to recap, I believe we do have a motion on the floor, and if you want to read it out, Madam Clerk, it'd be much appreciated.
Through your worship, the motion on the floor is that council approved the proposed changes to the Downtown Advisory Committee Mandate Letter. And further, the council approved the proposed budget and staffing requests submitted by the Downtown Advisory Committee for the second half of twenty twenty-three. In the amount of thirty one thousand five hundred dollars with the funding to be allocated from working. in the amount of thirty one thousand five hundred dollars with the funding to be allocated from working capital reserves. And the proposed communications position to report to the CIO, subject to the acquisition of the proposed services following all relevant town bylaws and policies.
That's the motion you want to make, make, Councilor Hicks?
Yes, thank you, your worship.
You may, may interject. It might be better if that, I know that I sit at those meetings, but the reporting to would be the general manager of community and corporate services. That way those activities can be integrated with his other staff resources.
Are you good with that, Councilor Hicks?
Sure.
Okay, and that would be Brad. Do we need to read it one more time? Are we good with that then?
I'm fine with that.
Fine with it. Is everybody else fine with the motion that's on the floor? Or at least the, the motion that's going to be on the floor. We'll need a second or for that motion. Councilor Mark. Yeah, okay. Now, is there any comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor, Councilor Pennell? And then we'll go to Councilor Shank, I believe.
Thank you, worship. Could we have a recorded vote, please?
Absolutely. And Councilor Shank, did you have another comment?
My, my question is to John, you just chuckled that it's not a toxic environment anymore down there. Because you went ahead when you bypassed the bypass, when you chuckled there to Brant. All right, I was just wondering if, if there was, if there was still any animosity, because remember there was animosity between Brant and the downtown and the way it was working, that isn't there anymore? Oh, okay. Then that's good.
I, if, if I may, I don't, I wouldn't frame it as toxic between and mentioning any specific persons in this room. It was just, there were some misunderstandings in terms of who managed the work. I think we've clarified this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any other comments, questions, or concerns before we call for the vote? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, I'll turn it over to you.
Word one, Counselor Shank? Word two, Counselor Hicks?
Yes.
Word three, Counselor Pennell?
No.
Word four, Counselor Norrie?
Yes.
Word five, Counselor Martin?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Calver? Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
That motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on. Eleven point eight Recreation Advisory Committee Report Trails Subcommittee and Rail Ties. We have a recommendation that a Trails Committee be established as either a committee or probably as an ad hoc committee reporting to council and that further direct staff to work with the Trail Committee to determine a provider to remove the steel rail ties and direct any funds from the sale of the steel be used for the urban portion of the trail. That's our recommendation. If we want to have some conversation on, on this with respect to the report that's before us. I think what's being suggested is that we form an ad hoc committee with respect to the trail and it'd be a unilateral committee that reports back to council with respect to, to seeing if there's any type of resolution to the matter. And I think that there probably is. So I think that once we form that committee, that hopefully we'll see some results from it with respect to, to, to what we're trying to do there. So Madam Clerk, did you want to add anything to that?
Through your worship, if I may, there are two reports on this agenda that speak to trails. This one is your recommendation coming from your Recreation Advisory Committee, which speaks at this point specifically to the in-town urban portion of the trail and getting some work started on that. The second report later on your agenda proposes that if you create this committee and if you decide that would be a good venue to proceed with conversations around the outside of, of the municipality or of urban Napanee portion, potential Catarac Way Trail connection, that if this committee exists, it would be a good place to put that. But that is, that is a second report later. Right now, we're just looking at, do you want to deal with the urban portion and the steel? And as the mayor indicated, well, it's been proposed as a subcommittee of the Recreation Advisory Committee. You may wish to say that it should be an ad hoc committee that reports directly to council to minimize potential delays around reporting structures.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And I think that, that makes a whole lot of sense as far as I'm concerned. If we're gonna form a committee with respect to trails, I think we probably should form a committee that's gonna respond directly to council. And that way it doesn't take away from the good work that's, that's gonna happen within the recreation committee itself. So they've got a lot of things on, on their plate without the trails. And I think if we're gonna look at the trails, we probably should look at both the in-town urban trail as well as the the, the trail with leads over towards the Catarac Way Conservation Authority. So that's sort of where we're at at this point. Is there any other conversation that anybody wants to have with respect to that? Councilor Shank.
So it's not gonna be, this is gonna be a brand new, is it gonna be an ad hoc committee of the recreation? Or is this gonna be a total separate committee that you're gonna have total different members on?
I think what's being suggested is we make it an ad hoc committee so that it reports directly back to council. However, I, I, I'm going to suggest that there's some very good people on the Recreation Committee that probably should be on the ad hoc committee. And then I think that, I think we all know who they are. And I think it would be a benefit to that ad hoc committee to put those people on that trail to make sure that we get the results that we, we hope we're gonna get. So I think that answers your question. Great, thanks, Councilor Shank.
So I'll make that as a motion. That's what you need. Jessica's finished typing and got her all together. There we go.
Through your worship, did you wish to appoint members to this committee right now?
And there's the second question. Are, are we prepared to this evening to appoint committees to that committee? Or is this something that we should come back and, and mull over and then come back? I'll look towards council to see what their thoughts are on it. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
I think we should, we should kick it around a little bit and get the session, discussion on it rather than making a decision here tonight.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think we should mull it over a little bit. I think at least I have my mind made up as to who should be on it. And I think there'd be very good for that ad hoc committee, but it's probably best if we mull it over, I think, first, and then we'll come back maybe at the next, next meeting of council, maybe. Does that give everybody enough time for, for two weeks? We can pass creating the committee tonight, though, I guess, right? And yeah, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
The only thing, and I, I surely do hope that you have, we, everybody was at that meeting. You have the two factions that, and Dave and Tom spoke eloquently at the beginning, that you gotta make sure that you've got Dave and two or three of them that side, and then you've got Tom and two and three on this side. As long as that's there, then I'm good.
I wholeheartedly agree with you, Councilor Shank. Okay, so have we got a motion on the floor, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay, well, let's get a motion on the floor with respect to creating the ad hoc committee moved by Counselor Shank. And do you have the wording that you need for the, for the motion? Maybe you should let us know, I guess, just to make sure everybody's on the same page. Sorry, whenever you're done typing.
So based on the discussion here tonight, I have that a Trails Committee be established as an ad hoc committee reporting directly to council with members to be appointed at the June sixth meeting. And then I don't know if you wanted to add in and further the council direct staff to work with the Trail Ad hoc Committee to determine a provider to remove the steel rail ties and direct any funds from the sale of the steel used for the urban portion of the trail.
I think we need to do that as well. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for being so diligent. I think we have to have that because I think we have to, we have to be an, an active partner within this committee as well, right? So Okay, so we've got a motion. Does anyone want to move that motion, put it on the floor? Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Do we have any further comments, questions, or concerns? I guess the only question I have is, is that we'll bring it back on the sixth of June and form the committee? Or do we need to form the committee prior to the sixth of June? And how do we, how do we form that ad hoc committee, I guess, is my question.
Through your worship, you're forming this committee through this motion right now. We will bring our report back on June sixth to ensure that we don't miss the step of appointing members to it.
Thank you very much, Jessica. I think that makes all the sense in the world. Okay, we have a motion on the floor with respect to the ad hoc committee for a Trail Committee. We'll call the vote if there's no further questions or comments. All in favor of the motion on the floor? Opposed? Motion's carried. Activity reports, twelve point one Community and Corporate Services Activity Report, and that would be Mr. Zadaberg, I believe.
Thank you, worship. Available for any questions?
Are there any questions, Mr. Zadaberg, with respect to his report? Go ahead, Counselor Pennell.
Thank you, through your worship. Brent, I see on the report that's a listing of thirteen, eleven and thirteen Market Square in the coming days. Are we separating those two buildings?
Through your worship, no, there will be offered as a single property at this point. Part of the reason why is there's a co-mingling of the HVAC system within the building.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Pennell. Is there any other questions of Brad with respect to his report? Seeing none, Activity Report Financial Services, May twenty twenty three, and I believe that would be Nicole. Does anybody have any questions for Nicole with respect to her, her report? Seeing none. Activity Report Fire Department, May twenty third, twenty twenty three, and I believe that would be Chief. Go ahead, Bill.
I'll let the report speak for itself. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Is there any questions of Chief Hammond with respect to his report? Seeing none. Activity Report Growth and Expansion, May twenty third, twenty twenty three, and I believe that would be Mr. Nopez. Go ahead, Michael.
Your worship, nothing further to add, but I am available for any questions.
Thanks, Michael. Is there any questions of Michael Atal with respect to his report? Seeing none. Activity Report Infrastructure Services, May twenty twenty three, and that would be Mr. Dayfall. Go ahead, Peter.
I worship, available for any questions?
Thanks. Is there any questions for Peter with respect to his report? Sorry, seeing none. And Legislative Services Activity Report, May twenty twenty three, and that would be you, Madam Clerk.
Nothing to add, but I'm available for questions.
Are there any questions for Jessica with respect to her report? Seeing none. So we'll look for a motion to note, receive the Activity Reports of Community Corporate Services, Financial Services, Fire Department, Growth and Expansion, Infrastructure Services, and Legal Legislative Services Activity Report for the month of twenty twenty three. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed? Motion's carried. Staff Report Infrastructure Services Utilities Water Pollution Control Plant Upgrade Project Update and Biological Process Pre-Selection, and I believe Peter's up. Go ahead, Pete.
Okay, thank you, worship. To, to link the staff report back to the earlier public meeting on the zoning and OP amendments. The technology that's in front of you and the staff recommendation is a complete new build on the west side of the property. So it's just as it's, just as it's displayed on the site plan drawing on that report in, earlier in the meeting. So regardless, I guess, one point to make there, regardless of what technology, whether it be this technology or retrofit design technology, the, those, there's certain portions of the retrofit that would still have to go on those adjacent lands, therefore the, those therefore through the planning act, we have proceeded with that. So moving on to the, the actual report. So basically, the, the purpose of the report is, is essentially to move forward with a detailed design with a very specific technology that, that will provide the town with substantial savings with respect to life cycle and overall future capital costs. So the, the technology is new in this part of the world, but it's been around for greater than twenty years. It's becoming so popular that the, the number of treatment facilities has doubled in the last two years. So it's, it's catching on. It's growing very quickly. The, some of the benefits for it include it's a much smaller design with respect to physical space. So you save a lot of money in, in concrete. It's, you can make it modular and add cells to it later on. So there's a incredible amount of advantages to that technology itself. It's been vetted through the MECP and, and even to the point where there's no pilot project required. So that's significant. Pilots are basically a large, you know, a more, a mobile treatment facility that would be adjacent to the site would take up to, usually they run it all four seasons. So it takes minimum of a year. And it's hundreds of thousands of dollars to demonstrate that you can do what you say the technology can do. So they've waived that. So we're in a position now, subject to council approval on the report, to move forward to get into detailed design. The, the advantage, some of the advantages of going this route is it's, to put in layman's terms would be to, it's like comparing renovating a hundred-plus-year-old building to a new build. They, there's very little risk in doing this technology on the greenfield site next door compared to doing the retrofit. And at the end of the day, a retrofit, you're gonna still be into utilizing existing concrete in buildings that are fifty-plus years old. So you're not gonna get that useful life expectancy out of it at that detail end of it. So the report's fairly detailed. I'm just gonna hit a couple of the high points and be available for any questions. We provided a table summary in there, discussed some counselors weren't here when this project, because it started in two thousand and eleven. And there are some time lapses in there. So we wanted to show exactly what has happened, what any time delays were and what's, what the constraints we're trying to work around. So, so hopefully that background content is, is beneficial for council. Some of the supporting information that's in there, one of the unique things that, when, when the AGS technology was reviewed is that typically when you're reviewing all the different types of technologies, they're usually very close. They're very similar with respect to the pros, the cons, overall life cycle costing, that type of thing. AGS was hands down better than any of them from, from mitigating risks to, to the overall cost, longevity, maintenance, like everything, the, the savings that, that will come under this, this design are phenomenal when you compare it to the other alternatives. So having, having said that, the, you know, a couple of the comments that I'll make is that the, the plant needs to move forward. We are still hoping maybe to get a provincial partner at the table. Because right now, when you look at what we have in reserves, and obviously we're gonna put a financial strategy around Q two in front of council to, so they can make some tough decisions. But you know, it's, we're around that fifty million dollar mark for this project. And between our federal funding, we have a fourteen million in our reserves. We would have approximately fifty percent of it, but we're not gonna want to deplete all of our reserves. So so there's lots of decisions yet to come. And we're just hoping that tonight we can, subject to a legal review of, of an agreement that has to be signed because it's proprietary technology. We'd like to move forward and jump in. This would be the, the catapult to jump into the design to get this project moving. So available for any questions?
Thanks, Peter. Does anybody have any questions of Peter with respect to this report and the request? Go ahead, Councilor Pennell.
Thank you, through your worship, Peter. Just reading the report and watched the movie and such. It says that during the process that it's injected with oxygen. I'm just wondering, is this oxygen that we need to buy from a supplier or is that from the ABN air?
Through your worship, so we use, we use dissolved oxygen. It's something that's generated on site, just through blowers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Pennell. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thanks, Peter. It, I mean, obviously, this is a big, this is a big deal for our community because fifty million dollars is a lot of money, but it's something that we don't do it. We're not gonna, we're not gonna be able to move forward with it. So with a little bit of research I did do on this, the system, it seems to be a very good system and, and a state of the art. So I think it's something that I, I think our community is gonna benefit for, for years to come. So go ahead, Councilor Shank.
One thing, if you, what Peter did here, when he put this also in the ACG environment, environment. One thing, if you, what Peter did here, when he put this also in the ACG environment, Envirocan. It shows everything here in a self-explanatory. When it's all settled and done, if they could even post that, you know what I mean? So the public could actually see, because they're going to see such a large bill, you know, they're going to say, okay, how are you going to pay for it and everything? And what are we getting? It just gives more information out there because it's self-explanatory, and I found it with the phosphate removals and some of the other things that it's already explaining. I think it's very informative that maybe we should throw that out there also.
Yeah, I think any, any type of a public relation aspect to this, I think we can get out of it. It's going to be a good thing, because like I say, this is something that our community needs. We can't move forward without it, and like I say, it's, it looks like it's a state of an art system that is going to take us well into the years when Mike and I are long gone. So, thanks, Peter. Is there any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you through your worship. Peter, where's this money coming from?
Through your worship, so it's detailed in the report. So, you know, up to fifty percent of that can be through the federal grant of fourteen million. So you're, I assume you're talking about the hundred thousand dollar agreement to get into, to get the technology to get into the detailed design, that part of it?
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, so yeah, that, that can, that can be through the funding stream, and so it can be subject to fifty fifty on that. So.
Thanks, Peter. There any other questions for Pete? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that council received for information, the infrastructure services WPCP upgrade, project update, and biological process pre-selection report, and further that subject to legal review by the town solicitor that council authorized staff to enter into a supplier technology and equipment engagement agreement with ACG Envirocan Inc. and Aqua Aerobic Systems, Inc. for one hundred thousand dollars excluding HST. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. CAO report, community safety and well-being plan, I believe, Mr. Pinson, this is you.
Thank you, worship. I just want to speak a couple of minutes on this, and to Counselor Shank's question to the lady presenters, that tends to be the most asked question. This is the second municipality I've done this in previous council outside, is this sort of an indication of downloading responsibilities to municipalities? I think they give a good answer. Realistically, the way I'm trying to find this is, this is the plans and methodologies by which you get police officers out of responding to nine one one calls or not having to call nine one one. There's a whole bunch of other stuff within the community that's identified. I know Bill has some experience working on this with the the situation table, where they see when they actually have to intervene with people that need assistance, the idea is to work back from that, such that they don't need the assistance. The biggest problem in small communities is who do you give this to? So you end up having CAOs and fire chiefs involved in this, and you don't really have the workers, the managers that give this to, because we don't have the resources like a city would have, and we don't have the social services staff like a county would have. And that tends to be the other dilemma in this, is that municipalities are managing and planned mandated by the province. All of the services that you require in that plan are sitting in another tier, they're sitting in provincial responsibilities, and they're outside of our funding mechanisms. It's not really a good answer, but it's still a bit of context in terms of what we're doing. The big benefit from this and working through it is access to the data, working with police departments, working with other agencies that try and help our citizens. This is really a way of how do we assist those people who are most vulnerable? There's no easy answer for it. This plan is a first start, and to be quite frank, this salt, this, this answers the mandated legislation question, and then we go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Pinson. Is there any comments or questions with respect to Mr. Pinson? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation that council adopt the community safety and well-being plan in accordance with Ontario's Bill one seventy five Safer Ontario Act twenty eighteen. Moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Norrie. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Financial services, CCT camera grant, and I believe that'll be Nicole.
So through your worship, just to give a little bit more context to the report. So during budget deliberations, council was in favor to keep and maintain the downtown cameras. Staff advised that the cameras are nearing their end of life and will be requiring replacement in the upcoming years. Staff became aware through the solicitor general that there is a grant opportunity partnership available for CCTV, which would be our cameras with the OPP. The grant requires a matching contribution of funds from the municipality. Since submitting the staff report, the OPP have provided an update that they have obtained the regional approval to apply for this grant. So staff are seeking council support and a budget amendment approval to match funding for this grant opportunity. The cameras would be town assets, and the town would be responsible for the operating costs of the equipment. If approval is obtained for the, for additional cameras, we would likely be able to apply a portion of DC funding towards the project as well. So under the alternatives outlined, staff are recommending alternative one, which would allow for the replacement and expansion of our current camera system, and would be asking for a hundred thousand dollars contribution from the town, which mirrors what we were predicting our current camera replacement will be costing us in the near future. Alternative two would maximize the grant funding available, so it would be a contribution of two hundred thousand dollars from the town, which would be match from the solicitor general for a total project cost of four hundred thousand dollars. And then alternative three would be to decline or commit less money to this grant opportunity. We also wanted to make note that if there is less money committed on the town side, it also lowers the amount that would possibly be available for DC funding, because the DC funding is only applicable to incremental new cameras that we would purchase. And currently, we have about approximately twenty cameras that are installed. So I'm available for any other questions regarding this.
Thanks, Nicole. Is there any questions for Nicole with respect to this report? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Calver.
Thank you, your worship. So you're asking for a commitment of a hundred thousand dollars, so we get another hundred thousand dollars in grant money?
That is correct.
And what happens if we don't qualify for this grant money? Then where are we at then?
So if we do not qualify for the grant money, I believe we would just wait for future budgets and replace those cameras when they become at the end of their life cycle.
And how many new cameras would this be adding?
I don't have, through you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have that information offhand. I know staff in our IT group are looking at different options of cameras. But we would report back, if we get the approval, we would report back on whatever those procurement options would look like.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Is there any other questions? Counselor Hicks.
Through you, your worship. Nicole, is the hundred thousand dollar match from the province, is this like a one-time thing that's only available in twenty twenty three, or can it be applied for next year?
To the best of my knowledge, I think this is part of the guns and gangs program that I think started out in twenty eighteen, I think it sunsets in twenty twenty three.
That answers my question.
And, and normally they, they are one-time type of situations. So I think there, there was an absorbent amount of money that was dedicated to guns and gangs. So this, this would, there was millions of dollars by the French government dedicated for that. So. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, and I think it's good news that it's already gone through regions. So the next stop is general headquarters. So. And it has the support at the regional level, I would say that, not to put the cart in front of the horse, but we've got a good opportunity to get this thing. So we've got a staff recommendation. Let me find it here, that council, no, sorry, that council received for information, financial services CCTV grant report, and further that council approved a budget amendment to the amount of one hundred thousand dollars in the event that the town is, town in successful, is successful in this application, and further that council endorsed the application submitted by the OPP. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. That's alternative one. Yeah. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, Nicole. Growth and expansion, PLOPMA twenty twenty two zero zero three and PLZACO twenty twenty two zero zero four, three hundred Dundas Street West, OPA slash ZBA, and I believe that's Michael.
Thank you, worship. This evening, we, I believe we have the, the property owner and the, the planner, the applicant's planner in the room, if there are any specific questions. This public meeting was heard a few meetings of council ago. There were some fine details that staff needed to, to work through. We've, we've since worked through those site plan details and are now back in front of council with a recommendation for approval. I will note that beyond the public meeting, we have not received any comments, questions, or concerns from members of the public. There was one note from a resident, I believe, sent to Counselor Pennell, who, which was passed along to staff, and there was some concern around permitting a licensed establishment and potential issues associated with the patio and potential noise. Staff believe that, you know, with, with the AGCO processes around smart serve and, and the licensing that, that goes into permitting these types of establishments with the AGCO, and along with our patio licensing by law that's currently under review. We, we feel confident that, given the context of the area, that this use would be compatible with the existing residence, residential properties on either side of this, of the subject property. So i- in essence, staff are supportive, given what mitigation measures can be put into place to, to ensure that there is continued land use compatibility between the property and neighboring properties. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and if I am unable to, I believe the applicant's planner would be able to.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Is there any questions for Michael or the applicant's planner who's sitting in the back of the council chambers? Go ahead, Counselor Penel.
Thank you, your worship. I just want to say I did hear from that same resident with a detailed phone call stating her opposition for this to, to go through. One, I just have a comment, reading the report, page eleven, a report comment B, is that the comment was that historically that there hasn't been any problems with the site with, with respect to noise, but I just want to point out that historically, the, the place has never had a patio that has been licensed as well. So this is all, all going to be new waters for us to cross. The other thing I, I would like to know, there was a comment in here about putting a buffer zone of planting trees across Dundas Street in front of Dundas Street, and also I'd like to comment on the parking. Last council, excuse me, it's drying here. Last council, we had a lot of concerns about the size of parking in this town, and I see that in the report, the owners requested that the parking be more towards compact cars. So it's not a lot of compact cars here in this town. But I guess that's the request. If there's not enough parking, there's not enough parking there. But if I could just have a, a better explanation of what was going to be offered along Dundas Street, please.
Through your worship, so yes, I'll just touch on the parking briefly. So the amendments that we made at the, with the last term of council, there was to be a sixty forty split between larger vehicles and, and more compact cars. So that's proposed to be more or less flipped in this, in this instance. Based on the site's configuration, the, the shape of the site and the existing building, and ensuring that there is adequate flow of vehicular traffic, and in order to meet the necessary parking demand and the bylaw, having a little bit of flexibility around size of stalls, staff are supportive, just given the, given the constraints that we are working with in, in this, in this instance. With respect to the buffering along Dundas, there is, there, on, on the east and west sides of the property, there's proposed to be a significant planting strip to help buffer between this site and neighboring properties, east and west, and then along Dundas Street is proposed to be essentially grass island, more or less. I, I can let the applicant's planner add, add any more details, but the county of LNA is the, the road authority here. So they, they do have some specific restrictions around how much and where and, and the size of those types of plantings, but essentially it'll help beautify the site, it'll give a little bit more back to the streetscape with what's being proposed and with what the county is, is accepting of at this, at this instance.
Okay, thank you. Just, there, there won't be any six foot high plantings or anything like that then?
Through your worship, no, there, there would be a grass boulevard appearance to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Are there any other questions? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, is, was there any thought given at all to possibly putting a condition or two on the patio, like, I know, I know, it's the only difference, really, I mean, it's restaurant now. So they're going to be serving alcohol, but on the patio, could we not put a condition that there be no music playing on the patio outside or no speakers, outside speakers, to just kind of alleviate the neighborhood a bit?
Through your worship, so, so that, those sorts of details would be addressed during the patio license application process. So once the site is up and running, they will need to make application for having a license to, to establish the patio and use the patio. So at that point in time is where those specific details would be captured. But with the applicant being in the room, you know, they're, they're, I think they can hear this conversation, they're aware of that, so they can, they can pre-plan that before making, making those, those license applications in the future.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. I see that the applicant's planner is, is listening. So. Is there any other questions? Seeing none, we've got a recommendation, the council received for information, the growth and expansion, PLOOPMA twenty twenty two zero zero three and PLZACO twenty twenty two zero zero four, three hundred Dundas Street West report. And further, that council approved the application subject to the following conditions. The council consider and decide on the merits of the written and verbal submissions received up to and including the council meeting, and that should new information be received or further input received, raise points for further consideration. This report and opinion herein be revisited as needed. Moved by Counselor Norrie, seconded by Deputy Mayor Cowherd. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Michael. Growth and Expansion, Bill one oh nine, More Homes for Everyone Act twenty twenty two implementation. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, worship. I previously reported to council on this topic in December of twenty twenty two. At, at that meeting, I provided information around Bill twenty three and, and Bill one oh nine. We were told at that time that Bill one oh nine's fee refund provisions were being delayed to the summertime. So they are coming into effect in July first, so meaning applications for zoning by law amendment and, and applications coupled with official plan amendments and zoning by law amendments, as well as site plan applications will be subject to the fee refund provisions for applications received after July first. So what we've been doing at a staff level to help address that concern, which it's, it's a very significant concern of staff, because our, our application fees are not, they're not exorbitant, they're, they're fairly small scale in relation to the peer review costs that often go into larger, complex applications. They can oftentimes reach into, into the tens of thousands of dollars that the municipality incurs, but that planning applicants must cover. So essentially, we get an invoice from our peer review consultants. We're passing that through to the applicant to, to cover our costs. So it's not on the back of the taxpayer. However, Bill one oh nine's fee refund provisions would require those fees in addition to our, simply our application fee to be refunded to the applicant, which could have very significant impacts. Those fees in addition to our simply our application fee to be refunded to the applicant, which could have very significant impacts on. Both the planning budget as well as potentially reserve funds if it's a very large, complex file and we're unable to. Reach a decision within the allotted timeframes in the Planning Act. So what staff are proposing is to. Adjust our pre-application process to do a lot of the front end lifting in a two-stage pre-consultation process rather than. A single-stage pre-application process. Now, essentially, what that will do is will give us the ability to do a first round technical review. Prior to deeming an application complete. Once we deem an application complete, that starts the clock on making a decision. So this is really going to. I guess. Help expedite going from complete application. To getting a decision because we'll have enough information to put put together a recommendation for council. If we don't do that, we would be in a position where we. You know, might have a pre-application meeting with applicants and say, we need X, Y and Z study. They can give us those studies, but they might not be technically. I guess they they might not be completed. To a high degree of technicality that we require, which we oftentimes. Determine when we're undertaking the technical review. So it's really going to front-end load that process. To give us more time to to digest the application. And get to a decision such that we're not going to be impacted. By those fee refund provisions. So it's helping to safeguard. The fees that we're collecting for revenue purposes as well as. Costs that we incur, but then we pass back on to developers. One other aspect that we are. Looking to implement a change to would be our fees and charges by law. So this would implement a change whereby. Fees collect fee rather invoices sent to applicants for peer review fees. They're not. Going to be. Directly connected to the fee refund provisions of Bill one oh nine. It's it's kind of skirting the process slightly. It's it's really. Delineating between a planning act fee for processing an application and fees for. Peer review, technical peer review. So it's helping to. Disseminate those two fees and protect those fees ultimately. So. At this point in time, looking for council feedback, see if there's any concern with that process. I'd like to hear that now because this this is coming up quickly. We will need to make it an official plan amendment to institute this this. The proposed modified two-stage pre-application process such that we have something to to lean back on when when applicants are inquiring about the process. This has been implemented by many municipalities across the province. But there has been an appeal launched in the GTA by the Building and Land Development Association. So I believe it was Clarrington and potentially Oshawa that I think are under appeal right now for this process. But we need to have something in place. We'll we'll monitor how that appeal process unfolds over the over the coming months and. Potentially up to a year. I'm not sure how long it's going to be to get to to a hearing for that, but we need something in place now that we can work with. And if we need to pivot. As a result of the the decision from that appeal, we will. But at this point in time, looking for council feedback to see, you know, are you in line with with that proposal to help safeguard fees? Are you looking for? Any modifications to the process? We haven't yet gone out to the development community with this, but we would be doing so before coming back to council with any recommendations. So. We would be making contact with our our bigger players because these really impact. You know, our repeat to repeat applicants, because those are the. Those are the applicants that are making applications that are going to be impacted by the the fee refund provisions of this bill. So those those larger zoning official plan and site plan applications. So if there's any questions, concerns of council, I'd like to. Hear those now and we can we can address those.
Thanks, Michael. Is there any questions with respect to Mike's report there? Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, worship. Through you, Michael, I. By reading your report, I guess I'm going to answer my own question, but with Bill one oh nine. And we have to refund the fees. That does not extend through to the peer review at all?
Through your worship, it it does. So we, to give you an idea of of scale. We have a fifteen hundred dollar zoning amendment application fee. If it's a very large contentious file, there could be several rounds of technical peer review. Those could amount into the tens of thousands of dollars quite easily, based on. You know, if we have a noise consultant and air emissions consultant, traffic, stormwater, the list goes on, right? Depending on the complexity, the the fees could amount quite significantly. So that's where we would like to. Help to safeguard that by instituting this two-stage process and delineating between. An application fee of fifteen hundred dollars and the technical peer review. Costs that would be levied outside of the Planning Act. The the Planning Act fee would still be subject to refund if we weren't able to make a decision on those very large files. But the peer review fees that are the bulk of the cost would be levied under the under the municipal act.
Oh, okay, thank you. And I just lost my train of thought. I'll be right back to you.
Thanks, councillor. Go ahead, councillor.
Mike, I agree with the two-stage report, the two-stage process pre-done. Doing a plan of subdivision. Isn't the municipality that most people are concerned or developers are concerned? They were, but when you send it out to a different group or being pure viewed, all right? I personally had a plan sent back. Because it didn't show at the end of seventy five feet, I didn't put up a my developer or not my developer, my planner didn't put a. Stop sign or dead end sign. Jerk me around for three weeks. So as far as I agree with Bill, that it's going to put pressure on them. All right, to make sure it's done, because if the developer's not spending the money, your town is not growing. So they have to get off their butt to make sure it's done and not milking the system, you know. Of getting everything, every last cent they can out of the developer. So as long as it's being fair for the developer still, that we're not circumventing everything, then. I don't mind, but that the the two-stage period, you know, I have not a problem. Then everybody knows what they need to do and stuff. It's just the peer review. Process of the groups of them going ahead and. You know, not doing as quickly. And then they end up having to pay the bill because. Somebody, some secretary talked to them for a little longer. That's what I I don't want to have.
Through your worship, just to to address that. Yes. So what what we would be doing through this process is really holding ourselves to a high standard, right? We would identify. Okay, we with this first round meeting, we identify here the studies we need. You submit those, we would have a turnaround time where we're not just. Sitting on it, right? We're we're acting on that and we're. Nitpicking to that degree about a stop sign, for example, that's something that can be caught later on. It's. Is the meat and potatoes really there or or not, right? That's what we would be. Determining in the in the two-stage process. Is there enough information here to make make a good sound decision, right? And as I mentioned, we we will be going out to our our usual developers to. Explain that process and hear any concerns they have and help address any. Potential issues like that.
Thank you, through worship. So, Michael, just by the sounds of it, just by doing this two-stage. Process, it sounds like you're going to have efficiencies right off the bat anyway. It's going to. Even by going to this to this design, it'll be quicker right out of the gate and. And it's it's sounds like a great plan. I I'm in favor of it. I like it a lot.
Through your worship, what it will help do is ensure that when we get an application that we are. We're we're able to deem complete. It it's going to be a much more expedited process for the applicant ultimately. It'll ensure that we have a very robust submission at the get-go rather than potentially delaying the process by getting it. And not so great submission initially and having to go back and forth several times. It's it's really setting the bar initially and. Ensuring that bar is being cleared at the second meeting to say, okay, now we're ready to move forward and and get a get a decision made. Yeah.
Thanks, councillor. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we've got a. Recommendation that council received for information, the growth and expansion Bill one oh nine, More Homes for Everyone Act twenty twenty two. Implementation report. Note and receive. Moved by councillor Shank, seconded by councillor Pennell. There's no further comments, questions or concerns? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, Michael. Thirteen point six, follow-up to May eleventh special meeting. And who will be speaking to that? Do we have someone speaking to that at all? I guess that would be Madam Clerk. Go ahead.
Through your worship, this report is based on the takeaways staff had from what we heard from the. Resident and council discussion on May eleventh. There are. Several options presented for your consideration. And available to respond to any questions?
Thanks, Madam Clerk. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Jessica with respect to this report? Yeah, go ahead, councillor Shank.
The only thing I would add into this is that the municipality look at the liability of the current bridge that we already have there. Or the ad hoc committee do it, you know, I mean, just. You understand what I'd say.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's what I can suggest. Maybe we can add into the ad hoc committee as well as this, if they're going to look at both. The urban and the rural part of the trail, maybe we should be looking at the viability of that bridge as well, right? So. Is there anything else for Madam Clerk? Go ahead.
Just to clarify, to make sure I heard correctly. Viability of the bridge with a V? Or liability with an L? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I said viability. It was liability. Yeah, thanks, Mike. And I think that's all part and parcel to it. So is there anything else? Seeing nothing, I just I just want to comment on the fact that we had a very, very productive meeting, I thought, on May eleventh. We heard from everybody. Involved in in this process and and I think. We made great strides going forward. So I'd like to continue to see if we can continue to make those strides going forward and and obviously the formation of an ad hoc committee is going to take us there as well. So. Having said that, we've got a recommendation. And did you alter the recommendation at all, Madam Clerk, with respect to the liability? Or.
Through your worship, I did not, but I could include that in.
I think it probably at this point would be prudent, or is that just something that's going to be understood by staff?
Through your worship, we can adjust the motion to read. Assuming that we're moving forward with staff recommendation that the report be received for information. And further, the council defer any further decision regarding the potential disposition of the land declared surplus under resolution number one seventy slash two three. That is the portion of the former CN rail line lying north of the highway four oh one until. A community council and community stakeholders have had sufficient time to review all relevant information and options and be. A good faith effort has been made to seek alternative route for a trail that would not cause significant adverse impacts to neighboring property owners. And would be financially and operational operationally viable. And further, the council refer the task of facilitating discussions. And reviewing the feasibility of an alternative route to the alternative trail route, including reviewing the liability of the bridge over the four oh one. To the. Ad hoc trail committee. That was previously established.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Is everybody aware of what the resolution is? So we'll need somebody to move the resolution moved by councillor Shank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the resolution? Councillor Hicks.
Through your worship. I've had some experience in looking at the viability of bridges and what's. Required to repair them or not. And I'm just wondering if. The ad hoc committee will be coming back with a request to council to go for a proposal. To have any sort of study done. I mean, you can stand there and say, well, yeah, it looks pretty rickety, but. That's not really what we're looking for. Am I? Am I correct? We want to know if it's good for another twenty years, thirty years, or if we should be taking it down tomorrow.
Yeah, I I think that's that's just a given that we need to find out what the liability there is with it. So. I I don't think we'll be able to get away with that. Looks pretty good from the road, right? So. But we can leave that in the hands of the ad hoc committee and the staff members. That'll be part of the ad hoc committee, I believe. Is there any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Mike.
Everybody was at that meeting, and I must say, kudos. To David Milligan and his family cohorts. And Tom Tizel. When they went ahead and said that, what they said at the beginning of the movie, they sat down, discussed, they agreed to disagree, and. They went ahead and they're working through all the concerns and what their concern was and what they were, you know. That shows that the community can come together even if they have originally had a difference of opinions. So it takes a lot of guts to stand up in front of a packed house and state the comments they did. So. I just, I thought it was awful, big of them on both parties.
Absolutely, councillor Shank. I was proud to be a member of the town of Greater Nappney at that moment. You're absolutely right. So. Is there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, I believe we have the motion on the floor. We just need to vote. Am I correct, Madam Clerk? The night is getting long. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Legislative Services R F P number L S dash twenty twenty three dash zero zero one for dog control and by law enforcement services. And I believe that's yours as well, Madam Clerk.
So through your worship, I just want to make a couple of comments about this report. First off, I I know there is a fairly significant difference in price between the two proposals that were received. The main factor weighting the recommendation on this is that one of these is an established. Known quantity that is already existing in the area and another is. Would be a proposed new area of work for this company and a new region of work for this company. So there is a fair level of risk involved in that proposal. Hence why staff are recommending the more expensive option here. I'll also note that while four potential pricing options have been provided. If there is a desire to stay within budget, as we have already impacted our reserves quite heavily tonight. Our department's preference would be to maintain our. Status quo on our animal control contract as we do believe that is the area for potentially the highest risk. One bad dog incident creates a lot of liability and costs and enforcement. And and is something pretty serious that we need to take seriously as an organization. And to revisit the question of how we staff by law enforcement. At budget time, maybe we go back to that discussion around expanding our full-time staff. Maybe we look at creating seasonal positions. If need be. Outside of this, there's potentially a conversation to be held around. Seasonal limited. Enforcement contract to supplement parking efforts. Around boat launches, I believe that is a separate conversation that we're planning to bring back to council at a later date. But if if the goal is to stay within budget, our request would be to look at that option one and not introduce. Risk into our animal control.
Thanks, Madam Clerk. So stay with staying within budget would be option one and. Option four is the Cadillac of what we need for my law. I guess that's sort of the best way of putting it.
That's correct. Yes. And and noting that that is still a somewhat decreased to what we had in our bylaw contract. Last year, that would be looking at either a smaller amount of hours throughout the whole year or focusing those hours only on the months of. Or primarily on the months of May through September, which is when we see the highest volumes of our calls.
Okay, council, what's what's your thoughts on this? Councillor Pennell.
Thank you, worship. To the Madam Clerk, if we choose option number one for fifty nine thousand eight seven seven. What would be the contract? Length? For that, would that be the three years as well?
Through your worship, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Is there any other thoughts or? Conversations with respect to Jessica's report? Go ahead, councillor Shank.
Is there any way we could just do it for one year? That we could just do it for one year, then we go through the budget process and say, okay, we want to go from May to September when all the calls are there. All right, see if it's working. If it's not working, then we can adjust rather getting tied into something that's maybe not might be working, might not be working.
And you would suggest if we're if we have the capabilities of doing it for one year, where that would be for the twenty twenty three year, which we're. Pretty much done anywhere halfway down there. where that would be for the 2023 year, which we're pretty much done anywhere halfway done anyways? I'll refer to Madam Clerk for that.
Through your worship, I don't believe that we can. This was tendered as a three-year contract with option for extension. This was contracted in three parts, noting that council could pick and choose between either just dog control or just by law enforcement or the two services combined based on budget constraints. But it was pretty clear about the three-year term.
And if we could we upgrade? If we go through for a three-year term with respect to option number one, do we have the ability to upgrade to option number four if things look better in 2024?
Through your worship, subject to our procurement practices, yes, I believe that would be an option we could consider.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any other questions or comments with respect to Jessica's report? Go ahead, Counselor Mark.
I just think that from what I've observed in my short time on council that bylaw gets an awful lot of contact. I mean, most of the complaints or issues or whatever is concerning bylaw. And I think eventually we got to get to the point where we put more resources into it. So just started to make that comment.
Yeah, no, I agree with you 100%. The root of most of our problems are bylaws, right? So go ahead, Jess.
If I may just speak to that comment. Through your worship, we need to do a little bit more analysis into our service calls, but I would state that most of the reported issues that council gets copied on are related to bylaw services. But that's not necessarily reflective of all of the requests for services that we receive. Not to say that it's not important, I just, you might be looking at some skewed data as well.
That's fair, Jessica. Thank you.
And we don't, we don't get obviously notification on every complaint that comes in either, right? So go ahead, Counselor Schank.
So all I'm saying is that's reasonable. So we have to do a three-year, but we can upgrade. So I'm not saying let's not go for the Cadillac version right now. All right, we'll go ahead and see what works, what doesn't work. Then we'll have all the information in front of us so we can make an informed decision of what, how many calls we have for dogs, all right? And how many calls we have for bylaws? And when we have all that information together, then we can say where we could do. And maybe there's a cheaper way to do the bylaw. You know what I mean? Then rather than having Front Neck do it, we could, you know, there's other sources that we might be able to attain. So that's, I agree with the cheapest option and then work up from there and get all the facts.
Yeah, and that helped to make my decision as well, Counselor Schank. If we have got the ability to upgrade, I mean, we're looking at six months of 2023. We're going to be right in these deep into budget deliberations here, probably in the next six to eight weeks. So we should have a good handle on as to what the direction that we're going to go from there. So I would entertain, if there's any, is there any other comments or questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to put a motion on the floor. Go ahead, Counselor Penau.
Thank you, worship. I'd like to make a motion that we contract to Front Neck. Sorry, my screen just went off here to Front Neck for option number one. For the three-year term.
Is, is that, do you have enough for that, Jess? Or do you want to add a little bit more about the note and receive and then go on from there?
Through your worship, for clarity, I can read the motion, which is that council received for information, the Legislative Services RFP Number LS-2023-001 for Dog Control and Bylaw Enforcement Services Report. And further, that the Corporation of the Town of Greater Nappany accept the proposal from Front Neck Municipal Enforcement, Inc. for the provision of dog control enforcement services under option one at an annual cost of $59,877 plus HST. And further, that the mayor and clerk be authorized to execute a contract with Front Neck Municipal Enforcement, Inc. on behalf of the town for term of three years effective June 1, 2023, with the option of two additional extensions of two years each. And further, that staff be directed to report back to council in the fall. Actually, we probably don't need that clause.
Thanks, Jess. You do that much more elegantly than I could ever do it. So we have a motion on the floor. We need somebody to second it. Seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Bylaws, bylaw number 2023-0040 Official Plan Amendment Number 48 PLOP MA 2022-003. We'll look for a motion to put it on the floor. And if there's any discussions in between the first and second reading, we can have those discussions moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns with respect to bylaw 2023-0040 before the first, second, and final reading? Seeing none, read a first, second, and finally passed this 23rd day of May 2023. Bylaw number 2023-0041 to amend zoning bylaw number 0222 as amended PLZACO 2022-004. Again, we'll look for a motion to put this bylaw on the floor before the first, second, and final reading. Moved by Counselor Penau, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any comments or questions or concerns with respect to bylaw 2023-0041? Seeing none, read a first, second, and finally passes 23rd day of May 2023. Bylaw number 2023-0042 to establish tax rates and provide for the collection of taxes for the year 2023. And we'll do this one as well. With respect to this, we'll look for somebody to put the motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Counselor Penau. Prior to first, second, and final reading, is there any questions, comments, or concerns with respect to bylaw number 2023-0042? Seeing none, read a first, second, and final reading, pass this 23rd day of May 2023. And bylaw number 2023-0043 to regulate noise within the Town of Greater Nappany. And we'll do this again by putting a motion on the floor. Moved by Counselor Penau, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Is there any questions, comments, or concerns prior to first, second, and final reading? Seeing none, read a first, second, and finally pass this 23rd day of May 2023. And I see Madam Clerk going to the... Sorry, we better vote. You're absolutely right. It's getting late. All in favor of that motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thank you, Madam Clerk. New business? Is there any new business? Seeing none, notices of motion? Does anybody have any notices of motion? Seeing none, statements by members? Does Counselor Penau?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to publicly congratulate Mike Dwyer on receiving his certificate, road supervisor certificates. Congratulations, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Penau. Anytime any members of our corporation can get any type of education and embed themselves, I think it's better for the community and for the corporation. So thank you. Are there any other statements by members? Seeing none, CAO remarks?
I have nothing this evening, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Pinson. The forward calendar, I know that we've all had an opportunity to look at the forward calendars or anything anybody wants to mention about the forward calendar. Seeing none, and we'll look for a motion for the, to confirm the proceedings. A bylaw to confirm the proceedings, the council of corporations, the Town of Greater Nappany. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schank, read a first, second, and finally passes 23rd day of May 2023. Motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Schank, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Any further comments, questions, or concerns? All in, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor Schank. Go ahead. Well, thanks, Counselor Schank. And we will work on getting this place cooled down for, because you're right that it's going to get warm in the middle of the summer. So have we got a motion for adjournment? I think we do, don't we? All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motions carried. Thanks, folks. It was an extremely long agenda this evening. Thanks for sticking with us and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.